You ready?
All right.
We'll call to order the study session of the Newport Beach City Council, September 13th, 2016. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Curry has an excused absence.
Our first item of current business, study session, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Any council comments? No? All right. Item number two, presentation of plaques to outgoing board members and commissioners. Do we have any outgoing board members or commissioners present? Anyone present? All right. I thought we were going to have a couple. Let me just say publicly for the record, I want to just extend, on behalf of the city, the City Council, our appreciation for the members, and there are, we're 10 or 11 citizens who have served on a council-appointed commission, committee, or board, and we are extremely grateful for that generous contribution of time and talent, and appreciate public service to our community. So if anyone listening or would like to, well, I guess, Madam Clerk, they'll receive a, I have a sample plaque that we'll be mailing out. All right. So publicly thanking our board members and commissioners who are stepping off and appreciate greatly their service to our community. Next item, we have a new version of MyNB app, which is an app for our phones, and so...
Mayor, the check presentation from the Friends.
Oh, did I skip one?
Yes.
Oh, that's a very important point, too. Pardon me. Check presentation from Friends of Newport Beach Library, and we have Amy Hunt, President of Newport Beach Friends of the Library here, and Mr. Tim Heatherton. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm Amy Hunt. I'm President of the Friends of the Newport Beach Public Library, and as you know, we run the bookstore. That's right inside the library. We're all volunteers, all donations, and through a lot of "Two for a Dollar" and "A Dollar" books, we're very happy to give this check for $205,000 to Tim Heatherton. Tim and his staff have presented us with a wish list that we went through, and that money will be very well spent, so we're happy we can do that for the library.
We are so happy and proud to receive that, a very public example of public-private partnerships, and the hard work and donations that Friends of the Library work hard to bring in books and resell them, and all the other fundraising that you do. We are very grateful for your support.
Well, thank you. We enjoy doing it, and we're glad we're so successful. And I'm sure Tim is, too, so...
Did you want to take?
Thank you.
Okay. Now, study session, item number four, the new version of MyNB app, and Rob Houston will present that update to us.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and community members. We've had a MyNB mobile app for a number of years, but we felt it was time to refresh our product and get it more current in its look and feel, as well as get a platform from the, I guess, the back software end, that we could update more quickly and easily, as well as add flexibility, so we could add new features as time goes on. As before, this MyNB app is available for free on the Google Play Store if you have an Android device.
Excuse me, Rob, can I just interrupt? Can everyone hear all right? Yes? Can you hear back there? Okay. It just seems that the audio is a little fuzzy, so... Everything turned on, okay? A little hard of hearing, I guess. Thank you. All right. All right, excuse me, Rob, please proceed.
No problem. Okay, we'll try again. Is that any better?
Yes, it is, actually.
Okay. So again, the app's available for free on the Android or Google, Google Android or Apple App stores, so feel free to check that out and download it. I'll go through some of the features, as you can see the main menu here. I'll highlight some. The Government Info tab you can hit. You can get your elected officials, see who they are. Apologies to Councilmember Pieter and Curry. They are on the page, just the screenshot, you're just down below. Don't worry, we haven't forgotten you. If you hit any of the council members tabs, you'll find a bio of them, for instance, the mayor here, and you can also email directly from this app if you have any person you want to contact. That's the Government Info app. On Discover NB is a catchall of a bunch of features that we're trying to test out here. We've got different tours, sculpture exhibition, library, City Hall site. So when you tap on these, you actually get a map of the area. For instance, the sculpture exhibition, it'll show you a map of the City Hall park area, and then you can highlight different tabs, see a photo of the sculpture, and a write-up about it. And it gives you an ability to see those features. Some of these we've had in the old app, and we're just trying to refresh them. In addition, you can see our parks, so they're all listed throughout the city. You can hit the website for that, see pictures, see what amenities are there, see where it is, get directions from where you are to where the park is. We've got pools, we've got the dog park also listed. And I wanted to highlight a test item that we have. It's a harbor tour. So when you go into the Discover NB tab, you'll see a harbor tour, and here you'll get a map of the harbor, and it'll, if you're on the harbor, you can, it'll show a dot where you are. And then we have different amenities in these blue dots that are harbor services, like marine fuel, yacht clubs, and amenities of that nature. And so we're testing that out. What we're trying to do with this app is have a platform where we can try new things out, and so we'd love to get feedback from people as they try to use it, and we'd have some improvements as we get further along, but it's a first stab at trying to get a way to highlight our harbor features. In addition to that, another feature is bill pay. We've had that in the old app, but it allows you to just, from your phone, mobile device, pay any bill you have for the city through here. Service request is a highly-used feature. As before, you can either register as a user, or if you don't want to register, if you do register as a user, you get the benefit of being able to see a list of everything you've submitted, and get updates on where the status of those submittals are. If you don't want to give the city any information, we're okay with that. Hit anonymous, and you'll get the same input screen, which is here. A request type will be offered. You can put a location in, either type it in or use the map, put a description if you wish, and you can take a photo. So I highlighted potholes on MacArthur Avenue. You can take a photo, include that in there. This, I think, has been fixed on MacArthur, just an example of a photo here. Maybe a reason why Dave Webb has to repave the road there on the photo. But what we have there is an ability to interact with the city, will respond right away, deal with that item. In addition, we've added an app feedback on the pull-down screen, so the very first item. We'd like to get the community members that use this to give us feedback, ideas, ways we can make it better. We'd like to have sort of a product that we can improve with feedback from the community. City News and Events is also highlighted. You can see our news feed, our Facebook feed, Twitter, everything's available, it'll automatically update on these tabs. In addition, the city calendar is featured, so you can highlight any day and see which items are ahead on the calendar, or like today, you can see the council's study session or the all-hands meeting, different things that are going on at the city. I just wanted to highlight one other thing. We have one other app in the city that was introduced recently called My Water App. It is a different app. It allows you to get more detail on your water services. However, it looks like, slightly different icon, this is the front screen of it, but we are working to merge the two apps into one. We're not there yet, but that's the goal, to try to have a one-stop-shop for online city information and services. So with that, that's a summary of everything. If there's any questions or any information required, that's a highlight of MyNB, which we hope will be an added benefit to the community.
Any questions up here? Rob, I have a couple of questions. Could you give just some information on the current usage of the prior app that we had for a couple of years now, I believe?
Certainly, we've, 1,320 people have downloaded the app in the city, which isn't bad. I would hope for higher, so anything we can do to promote that, I think, is great. But on the other hand, I've talked to a lot of other cities that have apps, and a big driver for their downloads tends to be service requests, and like some cities, potholes and graffiti is a huge issue, so they get a lot of people that sign up to report those. We could maybe take it as a small compliment, that I think we don't have as many of those issues to report, but any more people we can have to download would be great.
And if someone were to send a message in, where does it go to, and how does it get processed?
Depending on the item, we have it routed internally to go to the right staff members, so the app content would come back to the IT department. We'd look at that. If it's a pothole, it'll go to our Streets Department. If it's a park-issue graffiti, it'll go to the right department. So it's, there's an internal routing that, again, this app provides flexibility, so we can get it directly to the staff. We don't have to have, like, you know, an app sorter behind the scenes, it can be done using the software.
And then finally, you said with sending in any kind of suggestions for improvement, so this is going to be kind of continuous work and progress, I guess, or continuous improvement?
Yes, I think so. It's an interesting debate that's going on in some circles with government and innovation, and trying to be as cutting-edge as possible. There is some tension there, because if you're trying to launch something new and be innovative, usually there's some failure, and there's some things that don't work right, and sometimes the private sector is comfortable with that, and sometimes the public sector can be more, it can be not greeted as well. So we're trying not to have a bunch of stuff that doesn't work properly, but we certainly would like the idea to have some things that are 90%, and we'd get some added ideas from the community to help work together to make something better.
All right, very good. Any questions up here? Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to report that my son-in-law is living proof that it works, and he's had it a couple of years. He goes over to Castaways Park with his kids all the time, almost daily, and has taken pictures of various things, and then the response is immediate, that you guys come out there the very next day and fix it. So I was very impressed, and that was two years ago, so it's getting better. So I want you to know somebody uses it. It's good, very cool.
That's great. Thanks for that, and a testament to the staff behind the software that really get out there and responds, so it's really a partnership.
Mr. Muldoon, Mayor, Mayor Porton.
Thank you. So I think what, this is my personal preference, what's probably more interesting than our biographies, is possibly a historical site or historical aspects to it. I don't know if that's been considered. I know that in past, I thought it'd be a good idea to have iBeacon Technology or Push Notifications when you're near historic location. I don't know if that's possible or not, but we have a rich history in Newport Beach. I would love to see a page dedicated possibly to the story and some historical landmarks within the city, if it's possible.
Okay, that's great feedback, what we're looking for. I will add, on our website, we've contacted some historical societies in town, and we're working with them to get additional photos. We've created the beginning of a, basically, a repository of historical photos, and they're located, we put them on a map, and as you go to different areas, you can click on them and see what things look like at different eras, as a beginning on that very idea, but I appreciate the idea of an interactive, as you tour through the city, something that triggers to a historic area, and so we'll take that, look at that, and see if we can figure that out somehow.
Good. All right, let's open it up to the public. Any comments on MyNB app? Please come forward. Welcome to have, express an opinion. No? Okay. I hope you use it. I commend the staff for always looking for new innovative improvements with our technology, so we should, let's try to promote it and encourage residents and others to download it and use it, and use it as a way to communicate with staff and get prompt results.
Great, I agree.
All right, so thank you. All right, our next item is update on the city's disaster preparedness. So it looks like we have some official people coming here to update us.
John Lewis, Chief of Police, my mic wasn't on. Thank you, Mr. Harp. September is National Preparedness Month, so in light of that, we thought it'd be appropriate to give you a quick briefing on what we are doing as a city to be prepared should we experience a disaster, and this is, this is an ongoing process, this isn't something that we just do in the month of September. It's part of a coordinated effort throughout the city, a partnership between police and fire, and all our departments for that matter, as a, we are all disaster service workers. So what we have today is our emergency services coordinator, Katie Yang, and she is going to give you a brief presentation about what we're doing as a city to be prepared, and we'll have some time afterwards to answer some questions for you. So with that, I will turn the floor to Katie.
Thank you, Chief Lewis. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity today to come before you and talk about what we're doing for the city to be prepared for a disaster. In the light of recent earthquakes in New Zealand, Italy, we've had fires here in San Bernardino, LA County, it's just a matter of time, not if, but when, when an emergency strikes in Orange County, and it's important that we are prepared. So as Chief Lewis said, this is something that we are doing 365 days of the year to make sure that the city of Newport Beach is prepared to respond to our residents and our community. September is National Preparedness Month. That was proclaimed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and they would like everyone, so residents, businesses, everyone, to do something to get prepared. So it's a good time to stock up on water, to purchase a disaster supply kit, to talk about your emergency planning efforts. Their motto this year is "Don't Wait, Communicate." So they're, what they're talking about is how will people communicate during an emergency? What if you cannot text? What if you cannot use your cellphone? How will families communicate with one another? How will businesses communicate together? We want to figure these things out before the emergency or disaster, not wait until something happens, and then be stuck, if you will. First, we're going to talk about our Emergency Operations Center. I feel that that's kind of the center stone of our emergency management program. Our Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, is here at City Hall, it's in the lower level. We have a world-class EOC that is ready 24 hours a day, seven days a week, ready to respond at a moment's notice to an emergency or a disaster. This EOC, we practice regularly, drills, training our city staff. We are always trying to look ahead, what is the next threat? Right now, they're talking about in the new Zika virus, everywhere is talking about active shooter, all these things that are going on. That is what we are preparing for, not only what the possibilities are, but also looking forward as well to make sure that we are trained and ready to respond in an emergency. That training includes our disaster service worker training. All city employees, all full-time city employees, which is 700-plus, are considered disaster service workers. So what that means is today, if we have an emergency right now, and the city needed our employees to stay, those employees are required to stay. Or if it's at night or on the weekend, city employees are required to respond back to work. So we give them training. When new employees are hired, we give them training, and also ongoing training for our employees, to remind them of what their duties are and their responsibilities, what work locations they respond to, and what their functions will be during an emergency. We also, part of our Emergency Operations Center, we have a trained group of about 150 key and management employees. We are constantly training those employees to make sure that they are ready, they know what their role is in our Emergency Operations Center, to reinforce the capabilities that we can respond to our residents, our community, at a moment's notice, that we are prepared. In 2016, we've done a few drills. First, we did a maritime drill in March, which was simulating two boats colliding in the water. We had casualties, we had lots of people injured, we had lots of things to figure out, if you will. So we activated our Emergency Operations Center for that drill, called in city staff, gave them the scenario, and they are trying to work together to solve the issues. The other drill that we are going to be having in 2016 is an active shooter, so a Dallas-type incident. We're going to bring our employees, give them a similar scenario, and talk about if something should happen like that in Newport Beach, how would we respond as a city? So not tactics for police and fire, per se, but overarching priorities, responsibilities, functions of a city, how we would respond to our community. Here's a photo of our Emergency Operations Center drill. As you can see, it gets pretty busy. We have about 45 people who staff our Emergency Operations Center at one time. This makes up representatives from all city departments. We bring them into our EOC for face-to-face communication, to talk about the issues, and try to figure out how are we going to save lives, respond to the community in an orderly fashion. We've activated our Emergency Operations Center this year, this year on the Fourth of July. We did activate our EOC. We had two briefings in the EOC, one in the morning, one in the evening. We brought in representatives from police, fire, public works, and the city manager's office, discussed the day, discussed any possible threats that we knew of, and just discussed all of the things that everyone needed to know for the Fourth of July to keep not only our community safe, but also our first responders. This was also the first time that we put together a multi-department Incident Action Plan. So we had an Incident Action Plan that encompassed all of our workers, all of the events that were going on the Fourth of July, to make sure that we were prepared as a city. Some disaster plans, too, that I wanted to bring to your attention. Both of these plans are online on our city's website, if you would like to look at them, or if residents would like to look, is our Emergency Operations Plan. Our Emergency Operations Plan details how the city will respond and recover following a disaster. We will start updating that plan this fall. It takes about six months to update that, so spring 2017, we will have an updated plan and training to follow that. We have recently updated our Hazard Mitigation Plan. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is a bit different. It identifies all of our natural hazards in the city, and also, we come up with mitigation activities to talk about what we can do before a disaster to mitigate areas that we know that could be problematic. The last thing I wanted to talk to you about is next week, we will be having our Alert OC Call Out Drill. Alert OC is Orange County's mass notification system. Alert OC, so it can be found in all 34 cities in Orange County, and we do a drill annually with all 34 cities. It will be next Thursday, September 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. What we do is we call all residents only, we remind them about the system, Alert OC, and what it does, and we also encourage them to sign up their cellphone numbers and emails, that's information that we do not have. We encourage them to sign up, so that way we have more methods to contact them during an emergency. So that will be next Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Now I'd like to introduce Matt Brisboy. Matt Brisboy with the Fire Department is the Life Safety Specialist. Matt works on the community side of preparedness, so we're lucky that we have two positions in our city, one for internal and one for external preparedness activities, and Matt is going to give you the update for the community.
Thank you, Katie. Mayor Dixon and members of the council for having us today to talk about this important topic. I think what makes Newport Beach unique is that we do really have a comprehensive approach that not only includes city planning and city preparedness for city employees, but we really look at it as a partnership with our community, our homeowners associations, our businesses, our schools, to really try to organize all residents in Newport Beach for any unexpected disaster. No matter how prepared we are on the city side for any, to respond to any event, we really need residents to volunteer to take care of themselves following any unexpected disaster. So really, our approach focuses on the 190-plus homeowners associations in our city. We've really targeted them for, over the last decade, to look at how we try to organize them, both on the fire and police side. We really look at this as we need prepared neighborhoods, prepared for any type of unexpected disaster, crime, whatever may impact them. Our businesses, we have a very active business program. We partner with businesses such as Pacific Life, Pelican Hill Resorts, to have a comprehensive business program that's much more tailored to them, very different than our neighborhood approach. And same thing with our schools. We go out and actively participate with the Newport Mesa School District, on both the Newport side and the Coosa Mesa side, to really try to get our teachers and our administrators understanding how they can interface with everything that we're doing on the city side. In terms of our community preparedness, our Community Emergency Response Team is obviously the more well-known group that we have. Many of you see them at all the events and the booths throughout the community. This is the 30th anniversary of the creation of the Community Emergency Response Team. I had the pleasure of attending the national conference last week and participating with over 800 of my colleagues. There are roughly 4,000-plus CERT programs nationally. We're in 17 different countries now. Newport Beach has been very progressive over the years in terms of its community preparedness outreach. We started a CERT program 17 years ago. To date, we now have over 1,000 active CERT volunteers, including City Manager Dave Kiff and Carol Jacobs have been through our program. Our volunteers in 2006, they donated over 11,400 hours to the city outreach, and that's really huge for our fire department in terms of being able to really meet all the requests for boosts and community outreach opportunities by filling them in with volunteers, rather than having to take fire engines out of service and thus change our response model. In terms of some of the big events that we did last year, our Neighborhood Drill was by far one of our biggest events. We plan on doing this again next year, in 2017 in the spring. We had over 17 neighborhoods participate. I think what makes our approach unique is that you have to do things differently in Newport Beach, and what they do in Newport Coast versus what they do in Babo Island or Lido Island, it's a unique neighborhood approach in each neighborhood. And so they really have taken ownership in it, and for those of you that would like to come and see, it really is amazing what some of our neighborhoods have done to prepare and really take care and check on one another. This last weekend, we had our Eighth Annual Disaster Preparedness Expo. This year was unique, in that we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to do their Green on Green Eco Expo, along with our Disaster Preparedness Expo. We plan on doing the same thing next year. As you can see with the picture at the bottom of the screen, the fire department this year and next year are really focusing on hands-only layperson CPR. We want every resident in our community to be comfortable performing CPR and not to be afraid of doing it, so we're really trying to reach out to the larger community, as well as our youth, to really teach them in a few-minute section how to do hands-only CPR. In terms of our other community preparedness outreach efforts, as I alluded to earlier, our CERT boosts, we do over 100 of them a year at community events throughout the community. The CPR classes were something that we incorporated in 2013 for our CERT volunteers. We do about eight CPR classes every year. This past year, Katie had the idea that we should integrate them in for city employees, so we were able to provide five classes for city employees, one of which Chief Lewis was able to come through and attend, which was really unique. It was CERT volunteers teaching city employees voluntarily about CPR and getting them certified, and so we hope to continue that program again in the upcoming years. Lastly, just one of the things I wanted to leave you with is what can you do? The city of Newport Beach has a plethora of information on its website at NewportBeachCA.gov, and so if any resident is interested in any type of disaster preparedness information, we have a checklist, we have a lot of different things on how to develop a family plan, disaster communications, but the main thing is, we need you to talk to your fellow residents and your fellow neighbors, and really look at how you're going to best prepare your neighborhood for any type of unexpected disaster. Katie, myself, the fire department, and the police departments here in the city have wonderful programs to outreach to residents, but at the end of the day, the onus really lies on the resident to prepare themselves and really get prepared and work with the city. So I would encourage any resident to contact the city. You can also call, we have a disaster preparedness hotline, 949-644-3112, or you could always email either the fire or police departments to answer any of your disaster preparedness questions. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Any questions for us, ma'am?
Mr. Petros.
Chief, you know how successful the program is where neighbors will request the public safety officer to come in, and we've held it in our backyard, you know, where folks will come to our home, we'll chat about crime issues, and they're just really, really informative, and everybody leaves with a lot more information and the ability to protect themselves. I was wondering if you could comment on the, that same level of engagement for disaster preparedness. My family, my wife and I recently tried to make a phone call and have that same type of approach brought into the neighborhood, where, you know, "Come, look at our disaster preparedness box, look at our evacuation routes, is our water heater strapped properly? Do we have all those things?" And we were invited to join CERT. And while that's a wonderful invitation, that missed the mark of maybe having the ability to have somebody come out to the neighborhoods and engage with us to share that. So if it is being done, maybe explain how to have that. If it's not, maybe you could consider doing that in a very similar way to the public safety approach.
Well, thank you, Mr. Petros. I'm going to ask Matt to answer your question.
That's a great question, Councilman Petros, and yes, we take pride in going out to any requesting group in the city and providing that basic disaster preparedness presentation. And you are right, most of our residents will gladly sit through a 30-minute, hour presentation, but going through a 24-hour class is not really within the ballpark for most of them. for most of them, like our CERT program. But we have that, our volunteers have it. The Fire Department goes out roughly a hundred-and-fifty times a year to most of the neighborhoods. Any requesting group can have us come out and provide a disaster preparedness presentation that focuses on what they can do with their home, how to shut off their gas, how to build a kit, how to make a plan, the basic things that involve them, and then offer, you know, the training opportunities as well as where to find information online, which is often the most difficult thing for residents. Where do they get the information they need?
I apologize if I catch you flat-footed here, but do you happen to know the phone number or some contact that you could share with us now?
Yes, the phone number is (949) 644-3112, and the email is NBCERT@NBFD.net, and we would be happy to come out. This week, I believe we're doing three presentations like that, and so they're commonly requested. We are glad to come out and incorporate. I will say that the Fire and Police Departments do, I don't even know our numbers, but tons of them together as well, in which we come out and do the crime disaster preparedness together, just to kind of do them both on the same night.
That's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Any other council questions? I'd like to ask a question. So we don't allow ourselves, because this isn't individually, individuals are responsible, as you just explained, to take care of their own needs, but as a city, we have unique natural exposure, whether it could be an earthquake, tsunami, any other kind, many different kinds of potential disasters. And to avoid being complacent, that we've got an excellent organization in our CERT team, in our Fire, Police, and Emergency Services, and Lifeguard. Are there areas where we are lacking, where we need to address an area of potential disaster?
Part of your concerns there are addressed in our Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan for those types of incidents, but really where our focus needs to always be is on communication and education and understanding what all of our roles are in the event of a natural disaster, because ultimately, we know that our resources as a city are going to be taxed. And so what we really need to get the word out to all of our residents, to have a plan, know what to do, and take some ownership in terms of our own preparedness, and that's really where our emphasis is, is the education piece that we need to continue to support the other logistical plans that we have in place.
Okay. Why don't we open it up to the public? Any questions of our disaster emergency preparedness team, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. My comment on this was that when we hear good information is available on the city's website, it's sometimes not obvious to people where that good information is, and they might think you look under Police Department or Fire Department and get confused as to how to find it. I just wanted to point out, while they were talking, it took a little effort, but I discovered our city website at the top has little buttons, and in this case, you push the button that says "How do I?", and under that, you find a column of things that says "Find", and then it says the disaster preparedness or emergency preparedness information, and the page is called "Disaster Preparedness". So if you put the word "disaster" in the search box, you will get to it. So it's very logical, how do I find emergency preparedness information, but it might not be obvious. Thank you.
Thank you. So glad to know that it's easy to access. Any other comments from the public, please come forward. Seeing none, well, thank you, team, very much, and at some point in the future, Mr. Kiff, maybe we could have some members of the CERT team perhaps come and update us, too. I think that's a great group in the community, that's the boots on the ground, if you will, in terms of feet on the ground who are supporting our efforts. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon.
All right, our next item is a carryover from our August ninth meeting, a study session on short-term rentals. And Kim Brandt, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, members of the council. This is a carryover, as the mayor indicated, from October ninth, when we had a study session presentation on the staff's research on short-term rentals in terms of our current regulations, what's happening out there in the community now, and what are some options for going forward in terms of changing our regulations potentially and putting some additional protective measures in place. So I didn't want to go through my presentation again, but rather pick up where we left off, but I did want to put on the screen the two-phased approach, which I had presented to you in August, in terms of where staff is recommending that we go forward after this study session. And I'll just leave that up on the screen. This is the first page of Phase One, and then we have a second phase. But at this point, I just think it's best just to open up a public comment. You did receive a number of email communications that were included in your packet. There were also some additional emails that came in today, which I believe has been printed out for you and are in front of you. But with that, I think I'll just conclude and let you go forward.
All right, thank you. Any comments before we proceed with council? I don't see any requests to speak. All right, public, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and Councilman, my name is Craig Badley. I am an owner of a property management company, been in business for about forty-nine years. We specialize in vacation rentals. You know, the history of Newport Beach has about a hundred years of vacation rental history, and it's about eighty-five years of that was unregulated, not until 1994 did the city see to it to maybe put some regulations in. The city Newport Beach handles vacation rentals probably better than any other city in Orange County by a long shot, partly because they do have these regulations in place, and mostly because of the police and their enforcement of the noise regulations. We have two noise regulation ordinances, and the city does a great job on that, especially the police. As an example, we had maybe about fourteen-hundred reservations this last summer, and only two received decks, so that's way less than one percent. So families are the primary focus for vacation rentals, not party people, because that whole category of vacation rentals is designed for families. Since it was thirty-three years ago that there were regulations put in place, I think that the city should go slowly and review everything carefully before they put additional regulations in place. I think this whole thing started because of the disruption of Airbnb, and we wanted to explore that a little bit, and then it kind of morphed into something more. Any revisions to the code need to be thoughtfully crafted to reflect the marketplace, rights of property owners and the families who actually visit, some of them for generations. And I think the Terms of Use Agreement is key to this whole concept. Right now, you can get a short-term lodging permit, and you don't have to agree to anything. You don't even read no of the codes. You can be in Colorado, Massachusetts, Texas, get a short-term lodging permit in your business. And the proliferation of these internet platforms has exacerbated that. So I feel strongly that needs to be a Terms of Use Agreement. When people go in and apply for a short-term lodging permit, they will check that little box, and they agree to all these regulations that are in place that the city wants to enforce, plus maybe some new ones. As far as any limitations, currently, there's no limitation on a short-term lodging reservation. It can be one day, two days, any days. And I know there's been talk about a limitation, and I think that three days is really the number, if there's going to be one. This whole thing is sort of a trial basis anyway. We're going to put some stuff in place and then see how it goes a few months down the road, several months down the road. Three days accomplishes the purpose of limiting party-type weekends, because you have to go, you have to pay for a Friday or a Monday and take time off work, so eliminates about eighty-five, ninety percent of the party people. And I also think that perhaps it would be useful if the staff would invite maybe a few property management companies into the process to give a little more feedback to staff, to fine-tune this whole process before it puts before council. But I feel very strongly about the Terms of Agreement.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Microphone?
Yes, either one, please.
My name is Joni Stavali. I'm the president of Canyon Crest Estates Homeowners Association in Crona Del Mar, and I want to thank Kim Brandt for all the work she's done on this Phase One report, and thank David Kiff for the extra time from the last meeting. Just a couple of points on the Phase One recommendations. We agree with the requiring of annual permits, because annual rules and codes are constantly changing, and also to consider that possibly the funding from the annual permitting could contribute to increasing code enforcement. We're pleased to see that the team is recommending that property owners submit HOA verification. The city has issued short-term lease permits to HOAs that disallow them, such as ours. We vehemently support Recommendation Number Two, that places eligibility responsibility where it belongs, which is on the applicant, who must verify that their CCNRs allow vacation rentals. We also support the committee's recommendation that verification requirements be introduced to the municipal code. Point three in the report, it was home sharing. Home sharing is not a new trend, but it is a growing popular option, and a distinct, specific definition in the municipal code is certainly warranted, as suggested in Recommendation Three of the report. And then finally, increasing code enforcement. We feel that should be fully funded by those who profit most by the STLs, and such as fees for the annual permitting. To pass this enforcement cost on to all residents would certainly seem unfair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Ace Clark. I'm Flower Streets. I have a rear unit that I Airbnb out.
Could you please repeat your name?
Ace Clark. And I wanted to speak about the minimum stay, because it would really hurt me individually, and let me just explain why. I built my back unit for family. I built it not to rent long-term, I built it to have my kids have a place to come after college. I wanted them to build their lives close to where I live, and I think everybody sort of would agree with that sentiment. And now I have them coming home for weekends, I have them coming home for holidays, their families have expanded, so I have expanded family coming in. We plan our lives around our back unit being available in those times, and so we plan it, and Airbnb helps me fill in the gaps and helps me fund some of the very expensive things that are, you know, costs are increasing for me. The restriction on minimum stay would hurt me, because during the winter, I rely on weekend stays. That's my premium rate. I get weekly during the summer. I don't think it'd be an issue in the summer, because there's enough demand, but in the winter, I really need the weekend stays. I've never had an issue. I've been doing this for about a year and a half. I've probably had fifty stays. I talk to my neighbors. I talk to my neighbors if there's any impact at all in my Airbnb, and they'll tell you to a person. It's been a whisper. It has been zero impact in my Airbnb, because I manage it, right? I manage it well. And what I would encourage you to do is to continue down the track of managing this, but not at the operational day-to-day level like minimum stays. I think it's a little bit of, you know, overreaching. I think it's trying to manage my day-to-day operation and my business. If I mess up, find me and make it hurt, right? I got no problem with that, and most of the other regulations, of course, I have no problem with. I just react to you managing the day-to-day operation of twenty-four-hundred little entrepreneurs, right, trying to make a living, you know, renting out their units in many innovative ways like I'm doing, which isn't maybe typical of the way you probably have viewed this before. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is George Turk, 421 38th Street, Newport Island. We own three rentals. We'll pay about $20,000 in tax this year, on the rental tax. I think just about every owner will complain about the four-day stay. I think our perspective is, who that hurts is families, children that can't just be pulled out of school, middle-class people that don't get a lot of time off. In our case, we get really a good percentage are repeats, people who come year after year, and I think it makes sense if you want to put the onus on the owners or the managers to police their folks. I know we do, we kind of know who we're into. I heard the person from Crona Del Mar, I'm sure they have their own issues, but at our end of the peninsula, we're like Forty-Ninth and Neptune, kind of down there. I mean, that is what you have, those are rentals, and it's almost like that's what it was put on Earth for, down there. And our guests complain about the locals, actually, it's the nine-month folks. Our experiences, they're the ones with the parties and the noise and parking the alleys, and so I'm fine with making it tougher on the owner, perhaps, but I'd like you to rethink the not allowing two-night stays. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor, my name is Bill Upel, 107 24th Street. I've had the home there for fifteen years, had it professionally managed the whole time, and if there's any cutback in what you're trying to do here, it would greatly impact my retirement. I built a brand-new home seven years ago. The original home was built in 1897. So you see, there's a lot of places down there that have, you know, oh, this would greatly affect my wife and I. We live in Fresno. When the place isn't rented, we're down here, because we love Newport Beach. It's a great community. We take pride in our house, like I'm sure all the other people here that have money invested, but this would greatly affect our retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Kathy Murphy. I live at 120 38th Street, and I'd like to tack on to a couple of things that have already been mentioned. We, too, have been active members of the Peninsula lifestyle. We've lived there for more than ten years. We, too, have both owned a rental that's a standalone that we use for short-term rental, as well as live in a unit and actually rent out a back unit on short-term rentals. I agree with a couple of different points that our prior speakers have made. One is, the problem is not necessarily on our short-term rentals, but the problem actually for the noise and all is really generated by our nine-month rentals. There's several issues about that in partying, but as we know, many of them become university students who are there for the nine-month period, and they have quite a different lifestyle. Along with that is the parking challenge that this group presents. The short-term rentals usually are a family coming for a special weekend or another affair, and they have one car. When we have these long-term rentals, the parking is a problem everywhere along the Peninsula, but primarily with this group of nine-month renters that actually seem to have one car for every habitat of the unit. So that actually is another interesting factor on the longer-term rentals. The other point that I wanted to make was the minimum stay of four months, or four days, also impacts us, too, that we find that our short-term renters, if we actually were to limit it to, or to a four-day or four-night stay, that this really does change who can actually afford our short-term rentals, and these are usually those family members. And in a way, it actually discriminates those who may not be able to afford both the time and the money to actually stay. The last unit, the last note that I wanted to make, and no one has yet mentioned this, would be there's a statement, a maximum of two adults over eighteen per bedroom. I think that seems to really, who's going to be policing that is a very big question, but also, many of the people who do visit our units are family members, they have adult children, and I think that that is actually a very difficult stipulation to put in into the regulations. And so it's really neat, we really need to think about who is going to be policing that and to reconsider that, because of the number of people who do rent short-term that are family members with adult children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is George Schroeder, and I've lived down on the 100th Block of 35th Street since 1988, and so I live right down there in the mix with the short-term rentals, winter rentals, weekly rentals, year-round rentals, and, you know, there's a lot of nice people walking up here saying a lot of nice things, and I'd just like you to keep a few things in mind. First of all, the overwhelming majority of the residents down there are year-round rentals, are residents that just live there year-round. It doesn't matter if they're owner, they're paying rent, okay? And then every person who mentioned a nine-month rental and the issues that we have with them, that is... that is a short-term rental property. That is a property that has a short-term rental permit. That is a property that should be paying the TOT tax. Okay? The reason it has a nine-month rental is because it has a weekly rental June, July, and August. Okay? So there is complications with the nine months because most times they are UCI kids, and they are the people who do come home late at night with the Ubers. They drink a lot. They, you know, making noise when they get out or they're walking home and they, you know, so we do have issues with them. So that's a different complication, but they are short-term. Okay? The people who aren't short-term are there year-round. So it's the same people. On the, this new complication with the Airbnb that's gotten so popular now, these properties were built as two-unit residential units for people to live in. Okay? They weren't built as a little property for a property owner to maximum the most possible money they could ever expect to get out of it, being a hotel and things like that. Okay? Because again, the overwhelming majority of us are, now it's a residential area. Yes, people are speaking historically, there were vacation rentals, well, they were second homes. When the population was 30,000, half of the people lived in Pasadena six months, and they would come down here at a vacation home. And then, you know, some, and now we have majority year-round residents. Okay? So the fact that, I have a duplex. I like the idea that when I sell the property, I can tell somebody, you can maximize a tremendous amount of income on this little tiny property and just gin it all the way up. But it really isn't a realistic expectation for that size property. And again, there are short-term rentals that have a two or three bedroom, and they advertise like sleeps 10 or 12 people. They're putting futons and beds everywhere. So if they bring 12 people in, you know, they're all adults, that's going to be a lot of cars. So I do think it's reasonable, and there's a reason staff has come up with these concepts. It's reasonable to say two adults per bedroom. If it's three bedrooms, they have six adults, okay? Six adults are probably two or three cars. Okay? You know, and it's half of a building. Okay? So there's reason, staff has done a pretty good job on their recommendations. And again, you know, we spend a lot of money with the hotels. We have a, you know, visit Newport Beach. I know people that used to stay in hotels that will stay in a one- or two-day Airbnb because they can now. Before, at the short-term, it was pretty much a week or three or four days. Okay? So why do we want to cannibalize our, you know, hotels that we want to support? Okay? So, you know, so these are things you should think about. Thank you very much.
George, can I just ask you a question? Could you just repeat what you were saying about the nine-month rentals?
Nine-month is a short-term rental. Because, and the reason I say that is because that property owner goes short-term during the summer, so they have to have a permit. The reason they're nine months is because in June, they become a weekly rental. So am I saying anything wrong, staff? Okay, see, they're saying yes. So the nine months-
No, no, I'm not saying yes. Basically, if you rent it, well, if you rent it over 30 days, it's not-
Okay, well, the people who do nine months, they almost always go weekly. They don't go 30 days, June, July, and August. I mean, all the nine months on my block, they all go weekly. Okay? So when they go weekly, they are short-term.
And they're not paying their TOT?
No, I think they are.
Oh, okay.
See, no, no, I think they are. And I'm, I don't have issues with them because they're mostly managed by the professional management companies. Okay? And they're getting the UCI kids pretty much in line because of the Lugo ordinance that was passed. Okay? So they're kind of getting reined in. Okay? So, yeah, and there are issues with the younger crowd on the nine months. Okay? But, you know, we all live together. Okay?
Okay, thank you, George. Did you want to ask a question, Mr. Schott?
Well, I don't have a question, but I think what he's trying to say is, in response to the one lady's comment that the nine-month rentals are a problem, the reason you have nine-month rentals is because you have short-term rentals during the summer, and then you have the nine-month rentals coming back.
Yes. And the properties that are not nine months are not short-term. They're year-round, not short-term. The nine months is a short-term rental property. Okay? That changes people out, and we don't know who our neighbors are. Like I have new nine-month people down the block from me now, UCI kids who are blocking the alley because they think they pay rent, they can block in the alleys. So I have to explain to them they can't. And then they can tell me, well, my dad's a lawyer.
Anyway, okay. All right. Thank you, George. Appreciate it. Next, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dixon and council members. Tom Houston, Balboa Island. I'll be brief because I agree with just about everything that the previous gentleman said. Having lived on the island for about 50 years, the city's not designed for short-term rentals in residential areas. So your job is to consider the people who own property and live at the property. I'm not concerned at all about the visitors that come to our city. There's plenty of them. There will plenty, there will always be plenty of them. So to accommodate someone who has purchased a piece of property in order to pay for it, he or she has decided to have a cash flow on a short-term basis, which has been stated, it's very popular. It's not my concern, and I don't think it should be your concern. And last but not least, if you don't believe the effect of jamming people into these kind of rentals, go online and look at them. It's amazing how they describe the use of various rooms. And I think someone mentioned bedroom access or egress in the event of emergencies, and there's all sorts of blocking of windows. So there's a lot of ways we can regulate this stuff if in fact that's the, that's the solution. I would just as soon see it limited to a week's stay. We live with that on the island. It works okay. But basically, year-round resident should be the number-one concern that you folks have, taking care of their needs, not somebody who wants to drop in for a two or three week, a two or three-day stay. And the fact that in the, in the proposed amendments, it talks about off-street parking, that's a laugh. You know, we have folks across the street, and they've chosen to go down this road. The last group were four adult families with maybe 10 children and two dogs. And there's no place to park their cars. Kids play in the street. The balls bounce off everybody else's cars and plants. I don't need that. And I don't think that's what we're in business to do. So please consider that. If you make a tough set of standards, it's easier in the future, if everything works out, to back off rather than add an additional impact. So I thank you for your time, and please make a good decision.
Thank you. Next, please. If any other people would like to speak, why don't you work your way down? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council. My name's Lee Pearl, and I'm the president of the Balboa Island Improvement Association. And I've been following, usually I watch you on TV. Every once in a while, I make an appearance. And today, I've got two items, so I'll be at the council meeting too. I sent an email earlier today and hope that you had the opportunity to look at it because Balboa Island is kind of a unique piece of Newport Beach. We, all of the homes on Balboa Island are eligible to be short-term rental. And we've seen a pretty big dramatic change in the island over the last few years. We have a lot more permanent residents. And so there's a conflict between short-term rentals and permanent residents on the island. And I think a lot of the staff recommendations that you're going to be bringing forward will address some of the issues that have come forward on the island. But in my email, I've asked the council to reevaluate the staff recommendations, maybe within a year or so, in a short period of time, so that the new council members that get elected can engage with their communities and take input. I don't believe that as president of the BII, that I've done a good job of communicating with my residents and bringing that communication back to the council. So I think that if we put in place the staff recommendations, let it work for a while, I think we could be a lot more effective in putting a program together that would better address the needs of Balboa Island. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Carlson, and I live in Corona Del Mar. And first of all, I've been at all of these meetings, and I want to compliment the staff. I think they've done a wonderful job in taking many of the concerns. Those who were at the very first meeting, we had a lot of very angry and upset people. And I think they feel they have been heard, and I'm very pleased with a lot of the suggestions. The ones I particularly want to support are requiring the permits to be renewed on an annual basis, and also having those permits that haven't been used to be dropped or, anyway, not continued. And I would also like to say that it's sort of a nebulous feeling, but in Corona Del Mar versus the other areas that have been traditional rentals, what it is doing is changing the complex of our neighborhood from a more permanent, stable rental area of full-time residents to these duplexes being broken up and people being running in and out every weekend. And it really makes a difference. So I, this is the property owner's decision, but I think code enforcement is the one thing that everybody wants to emphasize is so important. And the follow-up on that, on calls, on noise, traffic, et cetera, over, put too many people in a unit, are all things that have been of a big concern, and I think the staff has done a great job in synthesizing it and putting it into a good proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Brad Dindolk. Both my children born here, my first two born at Hoag Hospital, lived on the peninsula for many years until we couldn't afford it anymore and actually couldn't afford having to follow our children all around the block because they needed a yard to play in. But, so we moved. But I want to say we have a property, 1925 Court Avenue, and actually have a little map that I distributed to you, and I want to talk about that in just a moment. But I wanted to say that we actually manage properties from Long Beach down through San Clemente, and it's interesting working with all the different municipalities. And one of the things that people, you know, kind of comment is, oh, it's so new, oh, this is kind of scary, and impact the neighborhoods and the character of the neighborhoods, as well as that they're taking over the neighborhoods. The study that I did in Speaking of the City of San Clemente was that it was anywhere between 1% to 1.5% of all residences in any one of the beach cities is our vacation rentals. So it's not like they're taking over, and it's literally from San Diego through Newport Beach that it's 1% to 1.5% of all residences. There's only a limited demand. There's only, you know, I mean, if there's too much supply, then people aren't going to make money, and they're not going to do it. So really, people have a very limited demand, and that's emulated by, from, you know, from Newport through, through Carlsbad or through San Diego, sorry. I wanted to say that, that the minimum nights, really that mostly affects the off-season. In the summertime, we're talking about, you know, most people have a seven-night minimum, and in the off-season, the two-night or a four-night minimum would really affect the off-season. People that are doing the vacation rentals full-time, they want to have these properties to be able to visit. I would also say, yes, that, you know, it's really, it shouldn't be the city council's position to look at the two-night minimum, four-night minimum and say how many nights it should be because you have regulations in place. Let's go with a more conservative approach, which is if you have regulation, it's $1,000, $2,000, $3,000, whatever it is, let that stand. Don't micromanage the operational aspect of this because you already have a penalty, and it will hurt those who fill in the gaps and need that in the off-season. I also wanted to say that, talking about the impact of cleaning services, personnel, and laundry, most of the trash happens in the summer, where the biggest impact on trash in the summer when there's seven days, not the, not the off-times. I do want to take your attention to Section 6, where it says phase out the 212 grandfathered single properties, as well as the expansion of STL areas. And I wanted to say that the, this area right here on my map, Court Avenue, between 19th and 20th, and that section, it stands out. It's actually kind of crazy because it's like this island between the, the commercial properties and the R2s, and for some reason, it was, it was made R1. And I just want to say there's, thank you.
Did you just want to finish your sentence?
May I?
Just one sentence?
Okay. It's going to be a long sentence. And I wanted to say that there are, in just in that very section, right now, there are 93 grandfathered properties that are still active. There's almost 30% of those properties are within this three-block, this little one-block area. And there are 25 permits in that area. There are 15 multifamily properties in that area, and I would like you to consider that this area right here be changed. I don't know why staff decided to say, hey, you know what? We don't want, you know, this to be fixed. But if you can clearly see the commercial and the R2s and just right here, this will never, ever be a single-family area. There are like 50 bars in this area. There are so many people, people get lost and can't go to the peninsula. We have the police substation. We have the lifeguard headquarters.
Okay, okay. Okay, got it.
I know it's a long sentence.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next speaker, please.
Hi, it's Di Landau. I'm a resident in CDM for 20-some years. We've done, I just want to give another spin on this and give two thoughts that are slightly divergent. One, we fell into renting only because we were leaving our house vacant because I had to go to work out of state. Were uncomfortable about it. Somebody had the idea to perhaps rent the home. And people who rented were from Cameo Shores, whose house had been damaged in rain and needed a place with a common school district. So it was a very positive experience where, you know, a city family could stay in a city home, stay in the schools. It led to the opportunity when, again, I had to work out of state, we could rent the house out for a month. We are permitted and licensed. I find it fascinating what's going on in this market. I endorse and support short-term rentals. I think it's a fantastic use of entrepreneurial energy and activity. I think it does need to be regulated with good codes and support from the city, and I'm delighted to see it. One of my concerns I'd bring up on just what I'm hearing with the Airbnb, which we don't do on a nightly basis, I feel at first blush, and I am not a lawyer, it seems somewhat anti-competitive. Are hotels required to have a four-night minimum? Because that's in fact who Airbnb is competing with on the nightly rate. But I'd like to take you to a different example of when a major tech employer asked me if I could be in Silicon Valley, and I started looking at real estate to stay up there and hotel fees. And the rates were so exorbitant, it wasn't feasible for me to work up there, and it started becoming an opportunity where maybe I'd fly up on a Monday and return on a Friday. So where will I stay for the three or four nights? And I looked at Airbnb. Airbnb now has a business segment, it appears online, as well as the personal vacation rental. So with great appreciation, I think her name is Ms. Brandt, the woman who did the materials, which I reviewed before I came to the meeting, the one, the two ideas that I said were a little bit divergent. I'd love to see a study of who's staying in those four-night or three-night or two-night Airbnb. We may find it's business people who need to work in the area, who are generating taxes and, you know, helping support the community, maybe people who can't afford the hotels and what the housing has become. Because I love the city, and I love what we're doing, but it's becoming unaffordable to millennials and young people. And those millennials are the people who are going to be buying the houses down the road. I think we want to have them here and have them enjoy it. So one of my questions is a study beyond the geography and the zoning, but to look in more detail at who's coming and what are they doing as economic players in a landscape, and how we support that in a healthy way for everybody. The second point I wanted to use my word was support. When I read all the material, it was, you know, taxes require this, require that, and those are important things. We need tax income, but as others have suggested, how about using the tax income to come out with support documents and support tools for those who are doing rentals, besides just permitting them? I know I went through a long process to create guidelines in my home to work with the Realtor who represents us. We go through an aggressive screening process and evaluation process. I do a review process afterwards because I want to see who it is, make sure it's been a good experience all around. So I'd love to see both sides of the equation, both the regulation to support the city and make sure we're safe in our services, but also the ability to see who's there and how we can also help those owners to do the best job possible as well.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon, council members. Art White. I have a rental and vacation rental company down on the peninsula. Just two quick points. The minimum stay requirement, I personally go with three nights. That's just a business decision. I understand the kind of clientele, and I think that's the sweet spot as far as the family that's traveling or just has a couple nights to get away. But looking at it, what is it trying to solve? You're trying to solve people who are going to check in- trying to solve people who are going to check in at 2:30 and check out at 10:00. So what are they going to do? People that are only there for one night are likely there to party. So I do understand maybe, you know, putting on a slight minimum stay, maybe two nights. I mean, business-wise, I prefer three nights, but I could definitely see how that would affect some people who are here and engaged. So, you know, when I see four nights, I'm leery of that, and I think that, you know, you guys would probably want to start on the small end and then kind of walk it up if it doesn't fix the problem. The problem, I'm assuming, is just noise of the type of people that would only rent for one night. So there's that. The other would just be the short-term lodging, the actual permit number. I think that's something that's wise to put on online advertisement. Just voluntarily, I do that. To the bottom of all my ads, you can see short-term lodging permit number, X, Y, whatever. You can go to the city website. The neighbors see that. Anyone can see that. They can see that it's not, you know, not only is it not fraudulent, which is an ongoing problem, but you can see that they're paying their taxes. This is people that have a permit. They're playing by the rules. They're throwing in that, you know, bed tax for the city. People that are off the grid, that are not paying that bed tax are off the grid. They're the ones that are not going to be playing by the rules noise-wise. They're going to be causing troubles with the neighbors, because they're not following the rules. So I think that the way to catch people who aren't following the rules is to make that a requirement where they actually do have to announce, hey, this is my advertisement, this is my permit number. You can look me up. And anyone that doesn't have that permit number at the bottom, that's a red flag. You can say, hey, these guys aren't playing by the rules. There's likely, you know, more likely than not, they're also going to be ignoring or ignoring noise regulation as well.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Don Abrams, Abrams Coastal Properties. Just a few comments. I heard a few people say that rentals were changing the character of Balboa Island, and I don't see that. We manage about 60 properties on the island. Our number has stayed between 40 and 60 for many, many years. I wish there were more, that we could have more business, but if anything, it's declining, because more of the older homes are being torn down and single-family homes are being built. So I'm not seeing this change in character. If anything, the homes are more professionally managed, and everybody seems to have a good time when they're there on vacation. Regarding complaints, I hear a couple people saying that they have complaints about rentals. We don't get complaints. I've had two. They were both about dogs this year, and in both cases, the owners of the homes were staying there instead of the vacation tenant, and they brought barking dogs. But we haven't had any complaints about our actual vacation tenants in several years. Nine-month rentals, I heard people talking about the UCI rentals. We haven't had UCI students renting on the island pretty much the whole time I've been in business. Not that we discriminate against them, they just can't afford the rents. Most of the nine-month rentals we have are people who had a flood in their home and want the island experience while their home is being reconstructed somewhere else. Maybe this is a problem elsewhere in the city, but we don't have this problem on Balboa Island. The last thing is about Airbnb. I think the problem isn't that they do short stays. The biggest problem is that they're not regulated, and they're not paying the TOT. If they were regulated, I think the situation would be much easier to manage.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Greetings. My name is Darrell Frisbee. My comment is in regard to item number six, the phasing out of the grandfathered clause for the single-family residences, I guess what would be considered R1. It wasn't that long ago, a few years back, that the city decided, at one time, you could have, anybody could have a short-term lodging permit, anybody that wanted one. And then the city decided at some point that, well, why don't we give everyone the opportunity, since we're bringing in these new regulations, to offer those that have R1 properties to submit the paperwork? And I don't know how long the period was, but I think it might have been like a 90-day period or something like that. But for those people who were offered that by the city, they did it in good faith. They came forward. They paid their business tax. They got their short-term lodging permit. And now is my understanding that this is going to now say, well, we made a mistake. We offered it to you, but I guess we're changing our mind now? Because the whole purpose of being able to have that for the owners was, in the future, if they ever wanted to offer their property for sale, it would enhance the value to be able to offer that on a short-term basis, to give them the most latitude to be able to rent their properties. So I would hope that you would reconsider taking away something that you had already offered to the individuals. And I think you offered it in good faith, and they accepted it in good faith. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor and Council members, my name is Ken Rossum. I've lived in Newport Beach on the peninsula for 27 years. I've been fortunate enough for that time to always have lived either in a duplex or multiple-family homes that I've owned. So I've been experienced renting out one part of my unit always. And what I'd like to say is, we currently have a home where we do year-round, short-term rental. If you enact the minimum stay of four nights, that would be detrimental to us during the winter periods. I agree with what's been said by other people here, and I think you can understand it. Business drives the summer. Nobody that rents an oceanfront, short-term rental will rent it for two, three, four nights during the summer. Demand is for weekly or two weeks or three-week stays. So the summer's controlled. What we need help with is not controlling us on four-night minimum during the winter. I would prefer you not put a control, but if you have to put something, four nights is too long. We bring people in for three nights, and I could go with a three-night minimum. Four nights is too long. Everything else that the staff has done, we've been watching very carefully on the short-term lodging, and I'm support, in support of everything that's been put together. I believe you need a maximum number of people count per bedroom in the units. Someone else brought up, how are you going to enforce that? Let's let the property managers, let's let the owners determine how we're going to enforce that. But keep the teeth there, so we can prevent units having 40, 50, 60 people in them. You don't want that. We don't want that as owners. I'd like to say, we've got a council member that I see here today that was here when we put together the Lugo. And the Lugo really helped change things on the peninsula in Newport Beach as far as parties and loud and unruly gatherings. We've got a DAC system. Let's put teeth in how we administer people that come and stay at these short-term lodgings and are too noisy. However you want to work it out, but our police is excellent in visiting units and telling them to turn the noise down. Turn the report in on the DAC. You get so many DACs, you get a fine, like someone else said here tonight. Just like the Lugo. The Lugo is so expensive that it makes owners comply, and it makes them get rid of the renters that are problematic. Help us with the DAC. Give us some teeth. I don't think that we have short-term lodging people that are problem renters. There's a few, but if you put penalties out there where we can get rid of those few, the owners won't want them to come back when it costs them $1,000 to $2,000 for having someone having an unruly house. Or if you get numerous DACs in a year, or whatever period of time you want, staff wants to put against that, pull their rental permit. That'll stop them from doing that.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
So I'm going to assume you don't like to rent for the nine months to a single party, because you can't get as much income as if you went and rented on weekends throughout the winter. Am I correct?
We're open in our particular unit, where we will rent if we can find somebody that wants to come in for nine months. And we've had people come in with properties that have had fire damage, and we do short-term rental, two, three months. So it's not, in fact, sometimes what happens is during the winter, you'd be much better off if you could find someone that comes in for nine months. But that typically doesn't happen.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Me, Sauberman, resident on the Balboa Peninsula. Good afternoon, Council. I would like to support some of the things that people have already said in their testimony. First, to commend staff, because I think this staff has really listened in the recommendations to what various members of the community have said. And I realize this is a complex issue for the city. I would like to say just a few things to think of in making policy. One is that the neighborhoods or villages, as they're called, are not so different between one another in terms of their demographics as what the city has always thought. Old CDM and the confluence of more people living there long-term, as well as people seeking to rent their properties out, it creates some conflicts. It's a very similar change in demographic to what's going on in the Balboa Peninsula, and also in Lido Island and some of the other coastal areas of the city in particular. So I think that any good policy could likely accommodate all of those areas effectively, and it doesn't have to be micromanaged relative. So that should make the issue of establishing a sound policy and a regulatory framework easier. Relative to the minimum stay, four nights sounds good, but I think if you look at the cumulative effect of four nights turning over and over and over, with any business operation that doesn't have baked into it a management model, it becomes a nightmare. So I'd ask that the council carefully consider that and revisit the notion of a seven-night stay minimum in the residential zones. And I think George Schroeder rightly pointed out the fact that we also don't want to cannibalize on our hotel stays. So having four nights rolling over and over is inherently problematic in terms of ability to regulate and manage it, particularly where you have an Airbnb or someone that doesn't have operational management built into their contract. Lastly, with regard to the home sharing in the municipal code, I just would pose a question. At what point does home sharing really become a boarding house? And I think boarding houses are something that Newport Beach, I believe rightly, has said are not permitted in the city. And I just don't understand how one could build a framework for that that enables the city to differentiate between a home-sharing situation and what could effectively and very readily become a boarding house environment with all of the related problems. So other than that, I think I really feel that the staff hit a home run in the recommendations. Thank you. And I would encourage the council to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I had a further comment about the recommendation number six to phase out the 212 grandfathered, single-family properties. The comment I had about that is, as I think the council knows, last Thursday in this room, the California Coastal Commission met here, and they certified an implementation plan for our local coastal land use plan that we already have, to becoming a local coastal program. That implementation plan had in it a lot of language that I don't know if anybody in the council had seen, the public had not seen, until a few days before the meeting. And to my surprise, it had quite a lot of language about short-term lodgings in it. And I could be wrong, but as I read it, it appeared to include a promise that at least within the coastal zone, the R1 properties that prior to 2004, where it had been legal to have short-term rentals, those properties, there would be a promise that they would be continued to be allowed that use in the future. So I would think you and the public might want some clarification for those properties within the coastal zone. Am I reading that correctly? And if I am, is there even a possibility of going forward with recommendation six, which would seem to conflict with that promise, should the council accept all the changes that were made in the implementation plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Carmen Rossum. We have yearly rentals, nine-month rentals, short-term rentals. So the question was made before, do you go with short-term year-round, because you make maybe more revenue that way? And not necessarily. And also, not necessarily the nine-month tenancies are worse than the yearly tenancies. I had a yearly tenancy three years with a tenant that two years ago, they had a Lugo on 4th of July. It was not my nine-month rentals. It was not my short-term rentals. So there is this judgment that vacation rentals are worse than the yearly and so forth, and it's not necessarily. It depends on who is renting and the owner, and if they are implementing or not. So I think all these details are obscuring or taking us away from the real issue, that is, you have people that follow the rules, they have a short-term permit, and they work with property management companies, and there are others that do not, that will try to circumvent the system no matter what. So, and if in case, we would like to request that the minimum stays to be at least three nights. In that case, if somebody says, well, you have all these four nights, people coming and going, well, not necessarily during the winter, you have a lot of vacancy. And it's not that you have four nights, and right after that, another four nights, and another four nights. That's not the case. So maybe then we will consider nine-month rentals, and then we will have other people that are not happy about nine-month rentals in lieu of the short-term year-round for the winter period. So that won't solve it. We think that it's more enforcing the rules and going after those people that do not have a short-term rental and don't have the terms of use, and that you have equal requirements for everybody who has to operate the properties. And then regarding the number of people, rather than use the word adult, I think it should be persons per bedroom, because ourselves, we don't want to have more than, in fact, the short-term lodging permit tells you how many people are allowed for that property, and that's what we have in our contrast with our people. So, and you can have students graduating from high school, some of them are 17-years-old or whatever, and they will comply with the number of 18-year-old older per bedroom, but they have more people in the unit. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Please come forward.
I have a quick one. My name is Chuck Courtwright. I've been a homeowner on Marguerite for almost 30 years. My wife and I are the founders and owners of Spock Regis across the street at 200 Newport Center Drive. We've been a short-term rental property in the back of our house for a year and a half, two years. We've had probably 100 visitors from all over the world. They spend a lot of money. We have flyers in our, in our unit that talks about all the restaurants and places, and we know for a fact, they spend a lot of money here in Newport Beach. We have never had one problem, you know, never. They've been very good families. And so I just want to make that comment. And then the average stay in our unit is probably two to three nights. I'd love to see it kept closer to that number. And I want to commend, the staff has been extremely professional to work with, and just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Debbie Westlin. We have a home at 2910 West Oceanfront. I have to tell you, I did a quick study and read on what had happened in the last few sessions, because I was not able to attend. So I hope that the comment that I'm making is not out of context, but there's a provision in the municipal code modifications that caught my attention, and that would be that the local contact person information be a person that resides within 10 miles of the property. And I'm assuming that that's the rental property. To my knowledge, nobody has commented on that before. For us, that would create a burden insofar as we live in North County. So we manage the property ourselves. We do both short-term and long-term rentals on our property. And I'm not certain of the reasoning behind that 10-mile limitation as to where that contact person needs to be. So I would ask for some reconsideration or comment in that regard. I am very much in favor of the regulations and the considerations being given. We have been involved in some of the other cities in North County, and these conversations and discussions don't go as smoothly. So thank you for, everybody for allowing that to happen. One other concern, and it may seem crazy, but it seems to be in our world today, which is a shame, but I am in favor of contact information, some of the notification, I think it said on the exterior signage, for the information that needs to be available, the permit number. the permit number, et cetera. A concern that I have, and I have to tell you that if a phone number and a name is part of that external notification, it causes me a concern with some of the craziness and routiness that goes on. I suspect, or have a fear, of receiving phone calls 24/7 that may not even be related to challenges or problems with the property. So again, I just bring that up. If this conversation had happened maybe 10 years ago, I don't think that it would be a concern. But to have a name, if it is a personal property manager like ourselves, it may cause some concern, and so would ask for consideration with that. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Hi. I'm an Airbnb renter on 15th Street on the Peninsula, and I would also like to agree with the--
Could we get your name, and if you could talk right into the mic, please?
Of course. My name is Sean Metta, and I'm not on the list. I don't know if there was a list. I just showed up a few minutes ago. Sorry.
That's all right. It's all right.
Okay. I also agree with the 10-mile radius restriction. I think it's very reasonable to have somebody available to the property in a timely fashion, but I think 10 miles might be a little bit prohibitive. As far as the four-night stay minimum, I would encourage the staff to look at perhaps allowing a three-night minimum. Labor Day and Memorial Day particularly are high points of the rental market, and most of the times, I find that families want to come in just for the extended holiday, not for any longer than that. So I think that would make it a little bit easier. If there is a four-night minimum, I think perhaps on very popular weekends, where there are holiday weekend, maybe you make an exception for those, for people who would like to be able to just rent their place for three nights. I strongly agree with putting a restriction on the number of occupants per bed. I think that is something that should be done in the permitting process when we submit to the city. And as a renter who wants his home to be well-taken care of, and who is not there when the renters are there, it would be very helpful to us if the city actually gave us some kind of official printout that we could post in the home stating that the city of Newport Beach only allows this residence to have this many overnight guests, or something to that effect. Because as far as I can tell, when I meet with people to check them in on Airbnb, I find that for the most part, they're young families and they're very honest, but I'm not there all the time, so I can't confirm whether or not they're bringing other people over, and there are more people in the unit than the city would like, or that I would like. And having something like that, I think, would be a good deterrent, or at least would probably be the best deterrent that we could have. So. And then I would also encourage the city, if possible, to try to collect the 10% transient tax that's being collected directly from these companies. My brother is a renter in San Francisco on Airbnb, and they collect the funds directly from Airbnb at time of rental, which, I mean, for everybody here in Newport Beach, I doubt anyone is trying to stick it to the city, because we have such a wonderful place to live, but it would just make it easier for us. It would make it easier for me, rather than having to write a check at the end of the year for 10% of whatever the rental incomes are. So those are my only suggestions. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward. Okay, going once, twice? We'll bring it back to council. So, council members, any comments?
Can I have some thoughts? Mayor Dixon and Kim may want to chime in.
Oh, sure. Actually, that's probably--
It would be helpful if, to me, we heard probably at least five different issues, that there are some variants from the audience, maybe if you felt comfortable weighing in on those, and those are three versus four days for the minimum stay, or some people advocated for something else. Should there be a persons-per-bedroom limit? Should there be a requirement that the contact, best contact information be within 10 miles? Should there be an annual renewal? I'm getting into the more stretchier ones. Kim, did things jump out at you that you felt like we needed guidance for, bringing back an ordinance? Besides those?
No, I think that covers the main points that people are--
I thought--
Well, the grandfather--
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, grandfathering in the 212. And I know Kim was taking notes when Mr. Mosher was talking, and may have some clarification on what the IP says. And then I don't think there's, Aaron was mentioning the require HOA verification letter. I didn't hear you talk about that, so I'm going to assume that that's an appropriate--
That is, or not?
Is an appropriate approach, that a person wanting to rent would have to self-verify that they are in compliance with their HOA CCNRs. Please let me know if that's not a good understanding. That way you can winnow down your own thoughts as to, and give us some direction, if you felt comfortable today.
Kim, did you have any other comments?
Yes, if I could just comment on the comment made by Mr. Mosher regarding our draft implementation plan, or the plan that was reviewed and approved by the Coastal Commission last week in respect to short-term lodging, that the, for the most part, the implementation plan reflects the city's current regulations regarding short-term lodging in terms of where they're permitted. So it reflects the 212 grandfathered units. If the council wants to amortize and over time have that allowance in the R1 zone, we would just have to go back to the Coastal Commission and amend our certified LCP at that time, as we would do with any other type of zoning amendment.
Okay. Any other comments that you want to react to? That's it? All right. Mr. Selig.
Okay, I'll go first. I didn't see a lot of lights out there. Well, first of all, I'm not sure how we got to this point of looking at the short-term lodging ordinance. I thought the direction to the staff was to deal with the Airbnb situation, which I think they've done a good job so far, and there's obviously more to be done in that, and that story will be written in the future. Just looking at the chart that's on the screen here, expand the short-term lodging operational requirements. I can say this, I've been on this council 11 years, I have never received one complaint on short-term lodging. My district, Babel Island, has one of the highest concentrations. No one has ever complained about a short-term lodging unit. That's not to say that some people don't like them, but in terms of actually getting a complaint on the operations, I've never received one. And so I'm wondering why we're even doing all of this. I mean, to me, it seems we've got the tools for enforcement in our code, and if the fines aren't high enough, increase the fines, but I see us doing a lot of monkeying with the ordinance. It's a lot of more rules and regulations that just basically are going to get down to enforcement anyway. So if we just enforce what we have on the books, it seems to me that if we do have a problem, that would take care of it. Like I said, I haven't received a complaint in 11 years on the city council. Requiring the permits to renew it on an annual basis, seems to me that's been working like it's okay. It's just more paperwork, more bureaucracy we're going to be putting into our municipal code, and if it's not broke, why do we want to try and fix something that isn't broke? The HOA verification, I'm really opposed to that. We have always stayed out of enforcing HOA regulations, whether it's architectural controls, view limitations whatsoever. I think it's a dangerous path to go down, and if we start going down on short-term rentals, you know, it's just a slippery slope, and who knows where that goes in terms of dealing with HOA stuff. Let the HOA members deal with that themselves, let's stay out of that. The minimum stay, I don't see any reason to put a minimum stay on. I don't see where four nights, or three nights, or two nights is going to solve any perceived problems that we have. And as far as home sharing goes, why get into that? Just leave the code alone on that. Bedroom limitations, the same thing. I'm not in favor of that. The whole, well, all these other things are in these proposed revisions, and based on all the information I have right now, I'm not inclined, if this, any kind of ordinance changes are brought back, that I would support those changes. Same thing on Phase Two, dealing with the grandfathered single-family. I think we ought to just leave that alone. Doesn't seem to me there's a problem there, let alone having to go back to the Coastal Commission and opening the whole issue up at the Coastal Commission, which if anyone's been following the Coastal Commission lately, you really want to go back to Coastal Commission on short-term lodging. And then the last thing is, if I'm on the short end of all of this, and we decide to do this code amendment, I'd just, you know, suggest that we have our staff work with the short-term lodging industry, Craig and Dawn and the other people that are doing it, to make sure that whatever we do, that we have industry input to, and we're not just doing it with our staff and bringing it back to the council. So those are my comments.
Well, thank you. All right. Please, okay. Any other comments from council members?
I saw Tony's name on the list. I'll echo Mr. Selig's. I would encourage staff to work with Airbnb, continue on regulation on, or enforcement of regulations we already have in place. If we can simplify in the way that we work with Airbnb without changing the ordinance by requiring permit numbers and things like that to make life easy, or with permit holders to have suggested rules that they post in their house, I look at that as just enabling or trying to carry out our existing ordinance a little bit better. Thank you.
Any other comments? First of all, staff, thank you, as has been commented many times today. Kim, thank you for your community engagement on this issue. Because of the city's long-term experience and legacy with short-term rentals, which, because there haven't been complaints, as Mr. Selig mentions, is because I think it doesn't work very well in our community, and our property management companies on the front end of dealing with their rental properties, and the tenants have done an exceptionally good job, because there haven't been any problems. I think what, in my opinion, what has happened in the last year, or two years probably the most, is the online rental industry has appeared in our lives, and in many ways, it's a good thing for entrepreneurship and small business, and running out a room in one's home and for additional income. I think that's all positive. I think what I have heard in going through and talking with residents in the community groups is that there are certain factors that are driving, if you want to say, misuse or abuse of our neighborhoods and our systems. So to avoid unnecessary regulation, yes, but to strengthen our existing regulations so that it does cover the online process. So for example, as Mr. Pia just mentioned, we currently require a permit, but there's, because it's only a one-time permit, if I understand that correctly, Dave or Kim, there's not an annual renewal of the permit. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's hard, I don't want to put words in your mouth, you could address this, Kim or Dave, how do we identify the properties that are being rented online if we don't have access to a permit? So I think getting the permit number, obtain, having the property owner obtain a permit annually puts their property into the city's system, and it is our responsibility to follow up with that property owner to make sure that the necessary TOT taxes are being paid. Because the next reason, because of the online growth here, is that the level playing field has become unlevel, with our professional property management firms are now competing with these online entities that are not going through the established system, and so without paying the 10% TOT, there's an economic advantage to going with the online versus the property managed, properties that are managed with the property management companies, who are doing all the right things without exception, and I'm very satisfied and pleased with their operations. So at this point, I just want to say, nothing that I am talking about anyway is to suggest that the current property management companies are doing anything wrong. They're doing all the right things. It's how do we get our arms around the online program so that we create a level playing field, and that the property owners and the renters are paying their taxes, their TOT taxes, and that would be the additional enforcement that would be required to step up that enforcement to go after that. And we've seen examples of just doing that with a contract employee, that person by going online, and because there are no permits identified with the properties, there's really no way, other than physically looking at every online listing for Newport Beach and going after them one by one. So let me just kind of go down the list to expand the operational requirements. So I know Mr. Badley and others are currently in their own businesses now using longstanding operational standards, and I know Craig, if you're still here, I can't see because of the sun, you have provided that framework to staff, and I think that there is a lot of good information and procedure and operational standards that we can adopt without having to really change your business practices at all. And the annual permit, I think, is needed to make sure that those residents get into our systems. The HOA, Mr. City Attorney, what's your point of view on that? Are we stepping into an area that perhaps is not a good idea?
Well, I think Dave's suggestion was a good one about having them self-verify. So that's something, if you want to include a provision where you're going to have HOA verification, then having the person who's applying for the permit self-verify that it's permitted by their association, as opposed to one of the other proposed methods is probably the best.
And you don't have a problem with self-verify, just checking a box? I mean, we can't, other than enforcing it, I mean, we have to, well, maybe we could discuss this later, but we could keep that on the list. The minimum stay, I started out in this whole process believing four days was, or a week, and then I went down to four days, and I've listened to a lot of people, and maybe the three-day would be a place to start, just to make sure that we don't get out of control with the weekend-only users. I could maybe be influenced on that, but right now, I'm three days. Home sharing, I think it's really just to add that into the code, not to prohibit it, but to encourage it, and to, a comment was made about boarding houses, I think we would not get that close, because it's a one-bedroom, isn't that, or one couch, or a living room. And the phase out of the grandfathered, I guess I would just say this, without intentionally phasing out, but if a homeowner, or property owner, does not renew their annual permit over X number of years, then essentially it's dormant, and maybe it is phased out on its own. So maybe staff can address that. And increased code enforcement, I think, is, and fines, and looking at the Lugo and DAC fines, I think are really important. Phase Two, somebody has written in and mentioned maybe we shouldn't wait two years, maybe one year. I'm ambivalent on that, but maybe staff could come back with another idea. Okay, wow. Since I've been talking up here, there are lots of people who want to talk. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I'd like to see the online entities play by the same rules, and I understand that sometimes they think they're above the law, they're not. So I would like to see them follow the same rules and pay for their own enforcement. I don't know why the city would pay for a whole new industry to exist that's not playing by the same rules as our local vendors, who do play by those rules. I don't think it's appropriate to take away property rights that one could argue follows the property. That being said, I do think that there should be an incentive for these folks to follow the rules and to let us know what they're doing. So I would also support Mayor Dixon's proposal to essentially, like, let's say, for example, there's five consecutive years of not reporting active operations, we give them a notification that we're going to be essentially revoking their permit at that point. It gives them a good reason to keep in touch with us, and if they're non-operating, then I don't think they'll see it as a loss of their right. That does not mean that they have to show any revenue. If you fall, I'm not asking that TOT be registered, simply that they show that they're keeping their options open and that they're in touch with us. Some of these other ones, I defer to my colleagues on. Thank you.
Mr. Selig.
Yeah, I disagree with you on the annual permit being a way to deal with Airbnb. The only way to deal with Airbnb is what the staff's recommending, and that is to hire a company to go out and continually call all the rentals to see the people that, whether they have permits or not. An annual permit isn't going to do the job. Again, it gets back to having an active program and enforcement, and going after Airbnb as part of the enforcement process. And so I just don't see having an annual passage as creating more, you know, more paperwork. I mean, that's what we're supposed to be doing here, is trying to find ways to limit the bureaucracy we have and cut down on paperwork. And if we have this outside firm that's contracted to go through and continually look at the Airbnb stuff, then that's going to be our way of making sure they get a permit, or they cease operation if they're not in the right zone.
Let me, can I just clarify what you're saying? So you're saying to force the online companies to do this?
No. No, we're-- Our staff has already proposed that we're going to hire a company to go in and go after the people using Airbnb that aren't paying their TOT. And then as part of that process, they'll figure out, you know, who's a legitimate person to get the-- person to get the permit and pay the TOT and who's illegally operating in a zone that it's not permitted. And that takes care of what you're thinking you're going to do by having an annual permit right there. That's the solution.
Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too support Mr. Selich's approach. I -- you know, Pandora's box has been opened, and the whole notion of these online rental agencies and companies is out there. It is entrepreneurial. I thought we were going to be talking more about that and what its effect is, and I don't understand -- I do understand, but I think it's unfortunate that the short-term lodging got morphed into this thing. I think that overall, that process and that program has been working very well over the years, and I commend the folks that do provide those management services. Although I will disagree, back when dinosaurs roamed the earth and I was in college, we were living on Balboa Island, so.[665.95][665.95](LAUGHTER). I would not support the renewal of annual passes. I think that the staff's recommendation for the online agencies is adequate. I too think it's a slippery slope when we start to get involved in HOA issues, and we historically have not and do not. So I think self-verification is appropriate. I don't necessarily like the notion of putting up a roadblock like a minimum stay as much as I would be supportive of punitive measures for those that create problems. The presumption with the minimum stay is that the majority of the people are creating problems, whereas what it's been our experience and is evidenced by Mr. Selich's testimony, that's not the case. Let's go after those that are habitual offenders and really, as it's been said, sock it to them. But let's not create a hurdle that everybody has to do because of a minority of offenders. I don't know that we need to include home sharing in the municipal code, and if there is going to be a grandfathering of the -- or a rescission of that grandfathering, I'm really interested in this -- the approach that you, Madam Mayor, are suggesting where we don't necessarily evergreen the permit, but maybe after, if there has been a five-year dormancy, that there would be a notification that the rescission is impending. So that's where I sit on this.
Mr. Duffield.
I would also like to echo Councilman Selich's words, and I feel we are going to miss him. He's been here ten years. I never thought I'd say that. You didn't think so either. But no, I truly would have to say that a lot of times you bring a lot of sage advice, and I think that enforcing this -- these rules with a little more money, I guess, if you would say, is a much more simple way to go, and I'm all about keeping it simple.
Mr. Mayor Potem.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, do you have a chance to speak with the outside counsel I referred you to regarding this issue? Were you involved in that conversation?
I was.
Was it -- if I -- I just heard it quickly, but I believe there's a theory that someone in online platform would be responsible for the cost of regulating. Could you please explain that?
Yeah, there's currently some cases pending in San Francisco about whether or not the online carriers are responsible for the content that's posted on their websites. So it's an area of law that's continually evolving, but I do think there are some good points you've raised tonight as far as having the permit number posted in addition, because that shows whether they have a permit or not.
And that's why, Councilman Selich, I believe the residents, the taxpayers should not pay for this. The billion-dollar company has a technology, and they may fight a little bit, but I am hopeful case law will come down to empower it so that we're not cutting a check to a consultant, but they're self-regulating themselves, which I think actually is sort of a pro-business position personally.
Kim or Dave, a couple of questions as we've learned through this process. Could you talk about our experience with the online companies and how they are or are not cooperating with the cities and identifying their users and paying the taxes and that type of thing?
So we've had a couple of meetings, one in person with Airbnb, probably six weeks ago, and they are willing to, as I understand it, collect the TOT for us. They struggled with linking us and our system to a permit number, which we thought was a bit strange. We thought, given a high-tech company, they should be able to put it -- have a box for a permit number. I'm hopeful that could occur soon. We had some struggles with whether or not we would have an audit provision kind of at our request. So we're kind of working through those things, but they did express, looking at the good side of things, they did express a willingness to work with us in any locality, especially in the tax collection.
And the idea being that they would collect the tax and then it --
And remit it to us quarterly and --
Over some period of time.
Exactly.
Yeah. Kim, did you want to add anything more in terms of the operational use through the online?
The primary concern is to have a permit posted on the advertisement so we can verify with city staff that they indeed have a valid permit to be operating. And I think the other thing that's very important that Dave has mentioned is the ability to audit. We have to know who is remitting and paying their TOT, so we have to be able to double-check against our permits.
Okay. Seeing no other comments up here, staff, do you feel that you have enough?
Sort of.
Sort of.
I certainly heard a preponderance of, don't do -- don't make very many changes. I did hear maybe a couple of windows. I know Mr. Curry's not here, so he didn't weigh in, but it sounds like I'm not -- we're not going to touch a minimum stay provision. We may have -- may come back with a -- I think there was marginal support for an HI -- sorry, HOA checkoff. There seemed like there could have been enough support for people for a provision that you would potentially, after five years, be on notice and potentially lose your unused permit or be amortized out in that extent. But -- and then generally --
If you lost your permit and you decided to re-up six months or a year later, would you be able to come back in and apply?
We'd probably have to set in that kind of timeline where you could change your mind when you realize the impacts of that, so that seems reasonable to me. And then -- but overall, I just heard reinforce the existing regulations and wait till there's another problem.
And also to incorporate what the property management companies are already doing as if that's possible.
Yeah, we need to look at that and see if that fit into an ordinance revision.
Or maybe they're not -- maybe they're just conditional uses.
Any thoughts on that, Kim?
Well, there are things that we can publish that don't have to be as part of the ordinance that I would consider best practices, that the city is encouraging and expecting of occupants of a short-term rental.
Well, if someone was saying there could be something that the city publishes that are kind of the procedural rules of operation.
Correct. There's a lot of information that we can include as part of a license that we can push out to our permit holders on an annual basis, information that we can include on our website. We've talked about having workshops on an annual basis. We've done that in the past. We're talking about redoing that, you know, going forward with that concept again. So there are things that we can do to keep our permit holders educated as what the city expects in terms of operation and then what the violations, you know, what the consequences of not complying with the city's municipal code.
Okay. Mr. Selich, did you want to add something?
Well, again, I'll say if, you know, we're up here saying what a good job these guys are doing, so let's stay out of their business and let them do their job and not put it in our codes. I don't get it.
Well, that's not -- in my opinion, it's not their business. I don't -- I'm not -- they're the models. I'm -- the people who are not being regulated are the new competitors, if you will, that are not subject to any --
Then enforce the codes. That's the key.
All right, staff, I'll leave it to you to keep it simple. How do we enforce the code?
Thanks.
And so, thank you. And so the expectation, this will come back to council in a month or so? Probably. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, all of you who came to speak on this. So, Madam Clerk.
Public comments. The city provides yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. If you could, please exit quietly. We still are in session. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. Regarding the closed session that -- in just a moment, the city attorney is going to be announcing the titles of the closed session items, and I wanted to point out that the last category of item involves a real estate negotiation, and I have no idea why a negotiation is taking place, but because there is no explanation on the agenda, I wanted to point out that the site, the address that he will be reading appears to be the address of our contract animal shelter, and people might have been interested in commenting on it had they known that, so it might have been helpful in the agenda to indicate what the property was about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, please come forward.
Hi, Sean Metha. I'm on 15th Street. I'm an Airbnb renter. I just wanted to quickly suggest that one way that might be effective to enforce the collection of taxes on these properties and to make sure that the taxpayers are licensed with the city is to just allow Airbnb to collect the taxes and have them remit to you on a more regular basis, because when they remit, they'll remit the homeowner's address information, which you can use to look up if there is an active permit on the property.
How do you know they'll do that?
No, I don't know that they will do that, but I know that as a homeowner, I'm required to submit to Airbnb that information.
Think that they don't, but anyway, but we can always ask.
It's something you could ask, because I think where their issue would be, because I've worked in tech a little bit, would be a requirement for them to create more information that they have to collect is difficult, but giving information that they already have and allowing the city to use that information to cross reference if there is an active permit might be an easier --
I like your thinking, and we'll push for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, please come forward. Please?
No more. Related to short-term.
I'm sorry?
Related.
Unrelated or related?
Related.
Unrelated. You may speak. It's public comment.
My name is Fran Rahimi.
You need to speak into the microphone for everybody at home.
My name is Fran Rahimi.
Could you please spell your name?
Fran, F-R-A-N. Last name is R-A-H-I-M-I.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, I'm here on behalf of Orange County Human Relations. I was here to put an agenda, but unfortunately I missed the date, and they told me it's going to be either October or November, so I'm just taking the opportunity of presenting Orange County Human Relation, and by hearing the cert and the disaster recovery, I'm glad that I'm another step to present to you. If you don't mind, I have a three-minute reading and present to you the annual reports.
Okay.
And may I present the --
Yeah, it's okay. Your time is running, so keep talking.
OC Human Relations in the city of Newport Beach over the last year, and I'd like to present with you with a copy of annual reports. We believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, so we provide programs to create safe, peaceful communities. OC Human Relation partners with cities to manage challenging issues with meaningful participation of all residents in the decision-making process, maintaining civility and healing as a community in the wake of difficult conflicts. Many of our programs are provided county-wise, but we would like to share the following data with about our additional service exclusively for Newport Beach. We mediated 91 cases as well as 27 families mediation in the community which -- or courts where one of the parties was the residents of Newport Beach. In collaboration with Newport Beach Police on hate crimes and individuals, our community group on hate incidents, we documented two hate crimes in Newport Beach since 2014. 389 Newport Beach youth participated in the Bridges Violence Prevention Program, learning to create safe, inclusive school climate. Four Newport Beach youth participate in our year-long human relation internship. In conclusion, over the past 24 years, OC Human Relation partnered with OC Cities to proactively build understanding and positive relations among diverse residents, bring police and diverse residents together to build safe, respectful neighborhoods, address tragic conflicts, overcome the divinities that sends a community and sustains the infrastructure to assist in crisis situation when they occur. It is just as important as the infrastructure of a storm drain, curves and gutters are the -- to the protection of Newport Beach is the human relation infrastructure of effective intergroup relation program, trained professional staff, and positive relations with diverse elements of our communities that can be called upon. At this time, I'd like to present a certificate of appreciation for allowing us to introduce ourselves to the city of Newport Beach, and we will follow up later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
Anyone else who wants to speak? All right, then, the city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss items four, A through C, including meeting with labor negotiators, Dave Kiff, who's the city manager, Assistant City Manager Carol Jacobs, and Human Resources Director Barbara Salvini regarding negotiations with the Newport Beach Police Association. The council will also be meeting with legal counsel to discuss three litigation matters, including Cabrera versus City Newport Beach, Balbuena versus City of Newport Beach, and Lynn versus City of Newport Beach. And finally, the city council will be meeting with real property negotiators, Dave Kiff, Carol Jacobs, John Lewis, the police chief, and Tom Fishbacher, who's also with the police department, regarding negotiations with Carol Brown, Rich, and Kathy Leonard, discuss the property at 20302 Riverside Drive, Newport Beach, California. Thank you.
Okay, we're in recess until 7:00 PM. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular session of the Newport Beach City Council, September 13th, 2016. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Curry has an excused absence.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. There's no closed session report this evening.
Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to welcome all these new, young faces to our council session tonight. I understand most all of you are from Corona del Mar High School and the youth in government. Very pleased to see you have an interest in our government. So what we're going to do now is Councilmember Duffield is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Jackson LaRue, member of the Baha'i faith, accompanied by Mark Teal of Teal Architecture. Please rise.
Please stand and face the flag, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
O thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to Thee. These hearts are radiant with Thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of Thy glad tidings. O God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to uprise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, and to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. O God, this American nation is worthy of Thy favors and is deserving of Thy mercy. Make it precious and near to Thee through Thy bounty and bestowal. Abdul Baha. Thanks.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for City Council announcements.
Mr. Petrus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am very pleased to announce that the 16th Street Recreational Center is now open. It's located at 870 West 16th Street. That's 16th near Monrovia. It's open seven days a week. It includes scheduled activities such as gymnastics, martial arts, music like guitar lessons, yoga, exercise, chess, and a whole lot more. There's programs there for youth, for preschool, teens and adults. I would just encourage you to contact the recreation to sign up at 644-3151. And we do have a short video.
16th Street Recreation Center.
This is not your ordinary recreation center.
16th Street.
16th Street.
16th Street! 16th Street is not your ordinary recreation center. 16th Street! Not your ordinary center!
Welcome to 16th Street, not your ordinary recreation center. Come join us and play.
So to all my friends and neighbors, everybody in the west side of town, you now have a new asset. Please come and enjoy the 16th Street Recreational Center. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I didn't see you jumping on the trampoline.
I'll be there.
Mr. Solich.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, last Thursday, a momental occasion occurred in Newport Beach, here in our various city council chambers. The California Coastal Commission approved the final portion of our local coastal plan. And that's after 13 years of work on the city's part, which I've been involved in it the whole time. And one of our planners, Patrick Alfred, and I don't think Patrick's here this evening, but Patrick's been involved in it from day one. He's the one that did all the heavy lifting on the 400-and-some-page documents over all those years. So I want to congratulate our staff. It was really a lot of work and a lot of effort on their part. They worked up till the last minute, actually even during lunch, to work out the final details of this plan with the coastal staff. And it will be coming back to the City Council for certification, I think around the end of October. And so after 13 years, we'll finally have our local coastal plan certified. Who says government doesn't move quickly?
And thank you for all your hard work. And how many years did you work on that?
13 years.
13 years.
Yeah, long time. Also, just another quick note, attended the final concert on the green Sunday night. The Bruce Springsteen tribute band was out there, and we had another great crowd. So it was the final concert of the season for our Arts Commission, and they put on a real good set of concerts this summer, and a lot of people attended them, and a lot of people were out there enjoying our civic green. And then finally, this Sunday, September 18th, is the Balboa Island Centennial. It's 100 years. 100 years ago is when Balboa Island was officially created, although some will debate on that since they didn't have any seawalls in 1916, but they got them eventually. Anyway, 11 o'clock, we're going to have the plaque dedication and the unveiling of the centennial statue. That's at, I guess that's going to be at 115 Aggett Avenue, and then at the end of Turquoise Street is where we're doing that. And then 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., they're going to have a community celebration on the 200 block of Marine Avenue. Going to have bands there, all kinds of activities for kids. And for those of you that love frozen bananas, they're going to have mini frozen bananas for free. So come on out and help celebrate Balboa Island's Centennial. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Piattar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, I don't have a cool video that I can run at two times speed. I've got the wonderful subject of mosquitoes. If you're interested in Zika viruses or West Nile viruses, we're going to have an informational meeting on Wednesday, the 21st, at the Back Bay Science Center. That's going to be at 6:30 at night. And the Orange County Vector Control, of which I have privilege of serving on their board as Newport's representative, will be making the presentation. We also have, this week, tomorrow night, we have a parking forum because we have all the solutions to parking in Corona Del Mar. That's not the high school, that's Corona Del Mar. Anyway, so that will be at 6 o'clock at Sherman Gardens. And then we also have a political forum at the end of the month, on the 28th. Doors open at 5:30. We'll, yeah, they'll basically tell you how to vote. Well, not true. But all the candidates will be there so you can ask questions of the candidates, and that's going to be Wednesday, the 28th, at the Oasis Senior Center at 5:30. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Duffield.
I have none.
Mayor Protem? All right. So bear with me, I have a number of announcements. We haven't met in over a month, so I've got a collection here. And I do have some audio visuals to support. Last Sunday was, as we all know, was the 15th anniversary of the 9/11 terrorist attack. And I was invited to attend the Pacific Triathlon, not as a runner or triathlete, but I did attend the triathlon to, at their invitation, they are celebrating 19 years of the race in Newport Beach, along Coast Highway and Crystal Cove. Bill Leach, a former CDM teacher of 30-some years, was the founder of the race, and he presented to me, to present to the city, and you'll see here in the image, these commemorative medals that were originally owned by a firefighter, two firefighters from Washington, D.C., who actually went into the Pentagon on September 11th, 2001. And so he's presented, here are the two firefighters, and Mr. Leach still is in contact with them, very heroic individuals, and their connection with Newport Beach, just because they were invited to attend the triathlon in 2002, I believe, was right after 9/11. So there's a special relationship between the city of Newport Beach. So I was really honored to be part of that, a very emotional moment of silence. So it was our little ceremony to honor the victims and first responders, both, of 9/11. So we'll put these medals on display, and it will be an honor to see them every day. Next item, I do want to show, I'll give credit, let me just move here along, congratulations, and I'm pleased to announce to the residents and to congratulate the staff and thank the residents for the completion of the 15th Street and Balboa Boulevard revitalization project. Later tonight, under consent calendar, item number seven, the city council will be asked to approve the notice of completion for the project, and our Public Works Department assembled this beautiful project and completed it six days ahead, and I think under budget. Is that right, Mr. Webb? Pardon me?
We completed within budget.
Within budget, well, that's good news. Okay. Just to restate what happened, because let me just say to the residents of the peninsula, this was a big deal. A big deal because of the major inconvenience for this period of time last spring, and a big deal because it's been a long time in coming. And I am getting emails and letters, and people stop me and say their businesses have actually improved on the 15th Street because of the enhanced parking and Trent, just the turnaround area there, and more parking, and just a more beautified area. So 15th Street and West Balboa Boulevard, between 12th and 21st, 21st Street, is now been landscaped beautifully, and the residents, there was a resident committee from both the West Newport Beach Citizens Advisory Panel and the Central Newport Beach Association, and they've been actively involved in this for how many years?
Many years, probably.
Many years. And they carried down to the tree, so it's been a community engagement project from the beginning. And I just want to thank Public Works, thank the residents for their indulgence and their patience, and for Public Works for managing the project. It really is an enhancement to the community and the peninsula community, so I thank you. The next item, what is on the slide here? Oh, Mr. Selig talked about concerts on the green. I just would urge you, if you did not, did any people attend the concerts on the green this year? Well, next year, please attend. They are just fantastic. And here's some of the images. For four concerts of averaging two or three or four or 5,000 attendants, we probably served probably 20,000 people. And it is fantastic. It was free, we had some community and private sponsorship, thanks to City National Bank for the Pacific Symphony Concert, which was fantastic. So we appealed to all music lovers, types of music lovers. They're early, you see families, toddlers, babies, picnics, from 6:00 to 7:30, so it really, and free parking, so it really was a tribute to the community and to our Arts Foundation and Arts Commission that made it all possible. So I wanted to just say that I really enjoyed that as well. Okay, Town Hall Meeting, I have a mayor's meeting, for anyone who wants to attend, next Monday at 6:30, Marina Park. We have a portion of it open to open forum, staff members are there. We'll be talking about the local coastal plan that's just been adopted. We'll talk about boardwalk and sidewalk safety, and the crosswalk issue on the peninsula, but it's for the whole community, not just the peninsula. So please come. It's informal, it's casual, and if you have any issue you want to bring before, make sure I'm aware of it, as well as staff, please attend. And as Mr. Piattar mentioned, there's some candidate forums, but tomorrow, Wednesday, September 14th, I'd guess this will overlap a little bit, with Speak Up Newport has a candidate forum here in the community room. And then next, Thursday, September 22nd, at 5:30, also in the community room, Women in Newport Networking is hosting a candidate open house. So anyone could come, no reservations are needed, to come and meet the candidates for city council. And speaking to all of you from Corona Del Mar High School, this is council, city council election, as well as presidential and statewide elections, but our city council elections are held in November. We'll have, we have three open, or three races, three seats in our districts that are, have candidates running, and so if you'd like to attend any of our forums, we encourage you to do that. That's government in action, as it's being made. Okay, and one last item, I appreciate your indulgence on behalf of the library, because their programs are really fantastic. This Saturday, September 17th, 10:00 to 4:00, Digital Saturday, the Central Library. So come and learn about how to download eBooks and magazines, and learn about databases, online classes, career and homework help, health research materials. Anyway, it's a wonderful free benefit from our library this Saturday. And then, some of you may be interested, who are interested in knowing more about art, finding meaning in a work of art. Maybe I need to do that, too. Thursday, September 29th, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., an arts educator will guide you through a simplified process for acquiring a greater understanding of art. So, sounds like fun, and I think that it is it for all my announcements. So, Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 23. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each of those items for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will all be enacted by one motion in the forum listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, we'll start, we'll start on this end. Mr. Piattar?
Consent calendar, I'd like to register a no vote on item 18.
You're not pulling it, is that right? Okay, Mr. Duffield. Mayor Protem?
I'm going to pull item 6.
What, did you say, number 6?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Petros?
None.
And Mr. Selig?
No items.
And I'm going to pull item number 10. All right, so at this point, we're going to turn it over to the public to comment on any item on the consent, except for items 6 and 10. So if we have any comments on this consent calendar, please come forward, except for items 6 and 10, which will be discussed in public session. Any items? Anyone wants to speak on any consent item? Seeing no one? Nope? Okay, well, we'll come back to council, and may we have a motion, please?
Before you make a vote, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So this would clarify, actually, so I have a, just noting a conflict on 11, just that I haven't been involved in 11 because of a spouse's office. And then we pulled eight, sorry, 18 was not pulled, but there is a revised resolution that you'd be adopting. Anything else, Aaron?
Number 6.
So Kevin's pulled, Mr. Muldoon's pulled 6, so I think we're good with 18 revised resolution, notice of conflict on 11 for me. Thanks.
Great. I'm going to move the balance of consent calendar, items 1 through 23, with clarifications on item 18 from staff, a no vote on 18 by Councilman Piattar, item 6 pulled by myself and 10 pulled by Mayor Dixon, and a recusal on item 11 by City Manager Dave Kiff.
We have a second?
Second.
Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items 3 and 4. Ordinance number 2016-15, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending subsection 12.68.060C of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to establish a residential parking permit program for Arbuta Street, Aleppo Street, Alder's Place, Amen Place, and Alta Vista Drive between Aleppo Street and Aurelia Street. An ordinance number 2016-11, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending the stakeholder business structure and annual assessments levied for the Newport Beach Restaurant Association Business Improvement District. With that, the motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
All right, now we'll go to item number 6, the first item pulled, which is parking restriction revision Vista del Oro and Mar Vista Drive. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Staff, you're putting the map up, excellent. Could you walk us through the process and our meeting with PTA and leaders at Corona Del Mar High School?
Sure, thank you. My name's Dave Webb, Director of Public Works, and just briefly go through what we've been doing here, so that the folks in the audience can catch up with us.
I don't think your mic is working.
Test? Sorry, a little closer, thank you. This is an effort that's basically trying to address a longstanding parking conflict that's been around Corona Del Mar. The council, this council and previous councils have been working with the school district for many years, trying to corral and address parking concerns, particularly getting some of the students into the campus lots, dealing with traffic concerns, safety concerns, wrong way driving, jaywalking, trash behavior, et cetera. The residents have been bringing this forward, so at the August 19th meeting of this last month, the council took an action to basically eliminate parking, and I'll look at this map on here. On Vista del Oro, you'll see a red line on the north side of that map. We put in a red curb, actually a no parking restriction on that side, and we also put in a no parking restriction on Mar Vista, which is on the lower side without a red stripe, but we did have a no parking curfew on the west side of that. This action tonight, after meeting with both the two HOAs in the area, that would be the Plaza HOA and the Bluff HOA, along with meeting with the Corona Del Mar PTA to come up with maybe a reasonable solution that might accomplish what we're trying to do, but it also gives some relief to some of the student parking, would change that last action to only having a 24/7 red curb on Vista del Oro on the north side, and taking away that parking restriction on Mar Vista on the west side. And that would be the action before you tonight.
But just a couple of, thank you, Mr. Webb.
I'm sorry, there was one correction, the staff report, too, on the second paragraph, it does say 8:30 to 3:30, but it is actually 8:30 to 3:00, and the resolution is correct.
But just so that there's understanding, I think you, Vista del Oro on the north side would be 8:30 to 3:00 only, it would not be 24 hours.
That's correct.
Vista, I'm sorry, Mar Vista would be 24-hour.
It would be open parking, it'd go back to the way it was. There would be street sweeping, but it'd be basically open to everybody.
And then, Mr. Kiff, I believe there also were some changes you and I had talked about offline?
Yes. Mr. Muldoon, we talked about, as folks at CDM High School will know, there's a little three-minute zone. We talked about removing that. We can do that administratively, so that would be open parking. It would no longer be restricted to three-minute parking. Another thing that I think has been important at our Friday meeting, folks were expressing how bad it is on Thursdays during street sweeping day, I can never say that right. So we're going to move street sweeping day, probably to Monday morning, which is the late start time, so that the street sweeper could be in and out by the time people need to park, especially on the interior side of Corona Del Mar High School. That takes a little bit of while to work with our contractor and work that out, so we're going to bag the signs. So this, bagging the signs means literally we put a garbage bag over it. You will be able to park there for the next couple of Thursdays until the council meeting on the 27th, when we will officially move the street sweeping day, again, probably to early Monday morning, which is your late start day. If the council adopts this, I believe we can make this take effect tomorrow morning. The question of getting out there and pulling the signs down, or not enforcing, correct me if I'm wrong?
We can take the current signs down, that's true. There is a posting on one side, we may have to order new signs, I believe.
But we certainly wouldn't be enforcing it.
Correct.
If folks in the audience wanted to, again, if the council adopts this, if you want to park on Mar Vista tomorrow on the residential side, if the council adopts this, nobody's going to bother you. So I think that's, those are my notes from, let me just add one more thing. I do think that it's important that the folks in the audience, whether you're a resident or a student or a parent, we need to keep working on a good relationship and a mutual relationship and mutual respect here. And I think there have been some great thoughts expressed by all about trying to work together, and the city is committed, I know Mayor Protem Muldoon is committed, to making sure we get to a point that this works, and I think this is close to that, if not there. So I'll turn that back to you, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. And for those in the audience, some of the residents feel like the school does not care about them, but I found that to not be the case. The PTA is working diligently with staff, and Mr. Patterson working on potential parking changes within this school, which will make a difference, sort of flex parking, I believe, and just raising awareness of some of the concerns that residents have, many of whom are, which are actually members of your alumni body. So I'm pleased that we had that meeting with the concerned parents, and I'm looking forward to hearing the remarks from the very small audience we have today. Thanks.
Let's go right out to the public, then. If you'd like, if any of you would like to speak, if you could start lining up, and then you could be positioned before either lectern, and public comments, please, come forward. And you each have three minutes. You could, if you have a card, you could put it in the little box right here, that's fine. If you don't, that's okay, too.
But people are...
The most important point is just to pronounce your name clearly.
People are welcome to come up, just on an ad hoc basis, as the young woman suggested.
Yes, but stand in lines, we can move through quickly. Yes, please identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Casten, and I'm the mother of a 15-year-old Corona Del Mar High School student who is not old enough to drive, but still, I am someone who has been negatively impacted by this no parking proposal. This is because in my precious free time, I do volunteer on campus. For the sixth year, I'm chairing the CDM Home Tour, the PTA's only fundraiser, and I sit on our CDM Foundation, working with both groups to help raise money for our teachers and our children. and our children. I, like so many students, parents, and visitors, need a place to park near the school when I come, for meetings, for plays, for soccer games, and many other events. When the parking lots are filled with kids who are in class and teachers who are working on campus, I need a spot. I am a very well-informed Newport Beach resident, homeowner, and taxpayer, but surprisingly, I was blindsided by the council's quick vote last month to keep me and so many others from parking on the public streets that surround our school. That worries me, and so do a few other things about this. Based on my research, there was little to no outreach to the CDM parent-student community, and I really do feel, and I'm sure you agree with me, that my tax dollars are as valuable as those of people who own near the CDM campus. Yet I understand that plenty of outreach was done in the East Bluff neighborhood. I think it's important to note that I live directly across the street from beautiful Irvine Terrace Park. That place is packed every single day with tennis players, moms with babies in strollers, grandmas walking dogs, church groups holding massive picnics, and many, many soccer players. This could mean on many days, I park far from my front door, I have cars blocking my driveway, I find doggy bags and water bottles on the lawn, but asking to make the curbs red is not who I am, or what I believe a good neighbor or citizen does, especially one who chooses to buy across the street from a popular city park. Now, in my work, I use visuals, so I thought it important to bring one for you. Let me get it held right. Okay? If you have seen this already, please take another look. This is our school in the sixties, built in East Bluff. You can see miles and miles of parking was available before the neighborhoods came in. Now, you may not be aware that this year, CDM Middle and the high school has a hundred and fifty more students than last year. I'm told that many are private school students. These are families who either can't afford private tuition any longer, or have moved to their home school to attend our phenomenal and nationally-recognized campus. I wonder how many more will decide to come back to their home school, and I really wonder how many children will join us from the new housing built off of Jamboree. I'm hoping my city council members will remember this when other projects, such as the museum project and the development at the car wash, come up for a vote. Kids are residents, too, who must go to school. We need more, not less, parking. We must remember this as high-density housing proposals come before you. Thank you.
Thank you. I please, please, if, please, please, if you would please, I should've said this at the beginning, please, no clapping, we'll, we'll be here all night. So if you could just, if you, what the Coastal Commission does, if you wanna clap, just raise your hand at that moment, instead of clapping, just raise your hand, so it's quiet and silent, we can continue to move forward. All right, please proceed.
Madam Mayor, city council members and staff, my name is Matthew Barity, and I'm the ASB president at Corona Del Mar High School. I'm a senior at the high school, and I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak here tonight on behalf of the two thousand four hundred students of Corona Del Mar Middle and High School, and would like to give you a brief background from a student's perspective of the issues at hand. In past years, parking around the school has been extremely hectic, especially on Thursdays and Fridays due to street sweeping, forcing students to move away from these spots and go to spots designated towards the residents. On days that sweeping was not specific, the competition to get a spot was still a battle, and for most students, this meant getting up at the crack of dawn, literally, when the sun came up, and started the battle even earlier. However, through all of that, we still knew that we would get a spot. Now, this issue is primarily, primarily for sophomores and juniors who do not have a spot in the parking lots. Parking in the lot has only been delegated to seniors with their approved parking permits, and this year, the parking lots was supposed to be the same as it was in the past years, being assigned to only seniors with parking permits. And with the size of our senior class, we only have fifty-five flexible spots available for those non-senior students to park in, and with the, with a limited parking on the street, we can currently not accommodate to all these drivers. This year, Corona Del Mar implemented our new bell schedule, our, our new block schedule, which, this allows for more instructional minutes in class while students have less classes per day. Seeing as some students do not have a first period, such as seniors, they do not have to get to school as early, until about nine-twenty-five AM when their next period will start, leaving some of the spaces open or what seems to be vacant, which some of the residents have noticed. The administration at our school has already addressed the seniors and said, if you're not gonna use our spots, then we're gonna give them away to someone else who could use them. So this is minimizing the parking on the streets and disallowing for juniors or sophomores who drive their cars to be parked on the streets, allowing more people to be parking in the parking lots. With the new block schedule in, in place and limitations on parking being implemented this year, the parking situation at Corona Del Mar has left hundreds of students without means of dependable parking. However, this proposal that's been proposed by the city could eliminate this problem almost entirely, so I highly encourage you to vote for this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Clarin Alkemura, and I'm an eleventh grader at Corona Del Mar High School. I would like to express my appreciation for you hearing us speak today, and I'd like to touch upon the main misunderstandings that we have here about parking. Some may think that carpooling with others would increase parking spots, but it's just not an option. Although that would be great, there's a law that restricts us from driving people under the age of twenty. Another unfortunate situation is that some students do not have parents who are able to drive them to school. Walking, biking, or riding the bus may seem like a good alternative, but a lot of kids have divorced parents that may live in separate areas that are too far to walk or bike. For our students, parking on campus is a privilege. We wait till senior year where we can finally park on campus. Another misconception is that CDM students look like they all leave at lunch, but most kids just stay on campus because we don't have enough time to walk to our cars parked on the streets. The majority of students at CDM take their education very seriously, and for us, this parking situation is seriously affecting our learning. Contrary to the typical high school we may picture in our head, the CDM students are actually committed to school, to our education and to our learning, and we don't wanna see the quality of our education decline from the lack of sleep due to parking. I'm at CDM to learn, to grow, and to experience high school to its fullest. High school is stressful, and we shouldn't let parking get in the way of our learning. I care about school more than anything, it's my main priority, and I think that I'm speaking for most of my peers. School, grades, getting into college, it's what drives us to work hard every day. This entire parking debacle is inhibiting our learning experience, and in all honesty, I just wanna be able to attend school without the extra stress of figuring out how to park in the mornings. I hope this controversy can come to a compromise for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Zach Gladman, and I'm an eleventh grade student here at Corona Del Mar High School. Thank you so much for having us here tonight, I really appreciate the opportunity to come speak in front of the council. I have experienced the incredibly hectic parking situation firsthand and deal with it day to day. Some people don't realize how hard it is truly to have to park at CDM High School and the challenges that come with it. Every morning, I get myself out of bed at five forty-five AM. I must get to school before six-thirty in order to get a spot. This is incredibly difficult because every spot fills up before seven AM, an hour before school starts. I often worry whether or not I can find parking, and if I can get to school on time if I don't find parking, and not be late. Many of CDM's current juniors wake up an hour or even two hours earlier than they did last year, strictly in order to find parking. Losing sleep for this reason can have a negative academic effect personally, but also negatively affect others, and thus our community as a whole. Tired drivers were proven to be three to five times more harmful than those driving tipsy. Although hard to believe, sleep deprivation, especially in teenagers, results in decreased brain function, increased blood pressure, and increased overall stress and anxiety, problems which should not be caused simply by parking. The problem does not stop there. As more and more sophomores begin to drive, the parking situation will only get worse. We already have over eight hundred students competing for less than half that many spots. Increasing that number will only make the problems exponentially worse. The situation has already gotten so bad after just one week that the enclave lot is filling up around six forty-five AM, over an hour before school starts. If waking up early means getting a spot, then students will just wake up earlier and earlier because of the competition, thus creating a domino effect which makes the problem even worse. Many students have been showing up late to class because they cannot find a spot, and in the last few years, our school has been working together as a whole to decrease tardies and increase our accountability as students. This problem is making it tougher for us to prove ourselves as independent individuals, and we believe that the solution benefits the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Wesley Davies, I'm a sophomore at CDM, and I'm going to be driving myself to school in a few months. I'll be honest, I didn't really know that there was a parking problem until the issue was recently brought up to me. All my classmates and I have spent fifteen years dreaming of the moment when we finally get to drive ourselves around, but now that dream seems, paradoxically, farther away than ever for us. The fact that I will never know whether or not I can get a parking spot for certain worries me beyond belief. I've seen sophomores that go above and beyond the call of duty by taking extra classes, harder classes, sports, and extracurriculars, so I know that the students at our school want to be there, which is why we need every opportunity to be there. There shouldn't be deterrence from a good education, there should be encouragement. We acknowledge that there have been a few bad engagements in the past, but the fact that this issue has come up at this time means that my fellow classmates and I know that we cannot take ease of parking for granted. But that brings me to my main problem with what has been done regarding the parking situation. Rather than immediately condemning students for a problem that we didn't know about, why don't we educate our school on the issue? Once the rest of our school understands the struggle of the people around us, I'm certain that we will all work to reach a common ground. I, for one, know that our speech and debate team and our Y and G delegation, which are represented here tonight, would be readily willing to do whatever's necessary to alleviate the pain. We could send out messages for students regarding parking issues via our daily announcements, in addition to other solutions that will make the parking areas as pristine as both you and I would like. So far, many issues have arisen due to a lack of communication. We recognize that some students can be careless and unconscientious, but that is far from the majority. I'm here tonight to tell you that you are correct. The rest of my grade, my school and I, we all understand that this is a pressing issue, and there are definitely solutions that need to be achieved. You've started a necessary, long overdue conversation with us. I want open communication between our school and the community as much as you do. But that doesn't mean that we should penalize the many for the faults of the few. CDM students, we are many different things, but the one thing that I can definitely say without a doubt is that we do not let the worst of us define who we are. Every day, we put our faith in our school to make the right decisions for us. Now, I put my faith in you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Sydney Custer, and I'm a junior at Corona Del Mar. I would like to say thank you to the council for letting us have the opportunity here to speak to a solution that would work for both the residents and the students. I want to reemphasize the impact that has made our daily lives at school harder, and if not addressed, it will continue to have negative effects on our school's population. The recent restrictions on parking has impacted not only students, but residents as well, so this is why I want you to, I want to urge you to act now. We hope that you have seen our own struggles from just this first week in school, and that as a community, we are able to come together to make a change. Together, we want to work with you to solve the situation at hand. I'm glad to have seen students, parents, and the community as a whole working together to be included in the process. Our program Youth in Government is a place where high school students can learn and bout and take place in our mock government. For the most part, our government functions in a simulation of government, so this is why we are appreciative to be able to speak in front of you today and to be a part of this process. This may even inspire more CDM students to be encouraged in our community and realize that we all have a part to play. The model government in which we participate is constantly teaching us about the art of compromise, the same art that I believe will be needed to bring this resolution to this issue. I believe the city will make the right decision, and I believe we can be trusted to do our part in making this situation better. Thank you for your time tonight, and we look forward to working with you further in the future.
Thank you. Next, please.
First, can you all hear me? All right. I'd like to thank the government of the Newport Beach and the residents and the students for welcoming me here tonight. My name is Moon Kang, and I represent the speech and the debate team and many other academic organizations on campus. First, I'd like to thank the service of our government, the enthusiasm of our citizens, and the sense of community from our students who understand that this problem is more than just us, it's about a sense of community. My family migrated to Newport Beach a few years ago because of educational opportunities at CDM. This school and this community is, if I may, is a jewel of our state, is a jewel that is a beacon of opportunity and education, the base, some of the basic values and the basic aspirations of this country. But for this reason, the student body is exponentially increasing over time, and because of that reason, and because of the increase in urban development in our community, our school is being hemmed in. Our student population kind of feels congestion on campus and around the campus. Therefore, I'd like to commend our government and our citizens for finding ways to accommodate us in our community. And I would also like to reiterate and support, lend my support to the ideas of unity, solidarity, and community. As the government, the students, and the citizens should come together in open communication to find long-term solutions which would accommodate not just the students, but also the residents who are living around us. The point is that we, the students, want to be good neighbors, want to be good citizens, and want to contribute to our community. We just want the opportunity and the communication to allow us to do exactly that. I'd like to end my, end my speech on a little note. I think as time increases in next few years, we're going to see a lot of new developments with increases in our school population, and we're going to see continual increase of problems in our, between the school, the student body, and the community surrounding parking space and other issues like traffic. Therefore, I'd like to urge the government to consider having continuous open communications with the student body and the residents around us so that we could come up with long-term solutions to accommodate all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Sam Roth, and I'm a member of Speech and Debate at Corona Del Mar High School. First of all, I would like to thank the council for their continued working relationship between the community and the residents on this parking issue. Most, if not all, of the key points about this parking issue have been addressed, but I would like to, again, thank you for working with the community and the school on finding, first of all, a short-term solution to this stressful problem for many students and for the residents who are seeking parking when they are leaving, leaving early or fighting against traffic, and for them to continue, I would like to continue to encourage you to work with the community and the school on a longer-term solution so that we can finally finish this solution with an amiable conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Council members and Madam Mayor, my name is George Adamson, and I'm a member of CDM Speech and Debate. I'd like to commend the council for their work on trying to alleviate the concerns of both the residents and the students regarding the parking situation around CDM. Our parking lots do not support our student body, and the streets around CDM are the only place for our students. This issue has gone on for years, and it is time for a compromise to be made so all parties can be pleased. Every year, the students argue one thing, and the residents argue back, and it's gone on for so long, and it's time for a solution. You've heard the voices of our students and the reasons why we need this street parking. You've heard that our, our school is growing, and you've heard that the parking lots do not support our students. I ask the council to proceed with the revisions so we can meet the needs of all stakeholders in this situation and end this dispute once and for all. It needs to be fixed, and it needs to be fixed for the long term and not the short term like it has in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Sanchez Kobiyashi, and I'm really proud of these kids. None of them are mine, but I'm very, very proud of these kids. I'm also very grateful for the Newport Beach Police Department and the work that they do every day to keep our kids safe and their utmost professionalism. I'm a member of the PTA at Corona Del Mar, and I thank you for considering input from all of the stakeholders. I respectfully ask that you repeal the no parking on the loop around CDM and sure, and ensure that parking is open around the loop as was described in the plan. Finally, I'd like to encourage you to work in the spirit of partnership with all stakeholders, including the administration and the PTA, before decisions are made that will impact the school, because CDM is part of the neighborhood, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, council members. My name's Lori Preje, and I'm the parent of two children who attend CDM, neither which are driving at the current time, but soon parking- are driving at the current time, but soon parking will be an issue for us as well. First off, I wanted to thank the city staff and Councilman Muldoon for giving the PTA Foundation, I'm sorry, the PTA, the foundation and the administration a chance over the last few days to discuss our concerns about these new parking restrictions before the resolution is voted on by the city council. I wanted to provide a few numbers to you guys. In the year 2000, CDM middle school and high school enrollment was 1,824 students, and last week, the confirmed enrollment was 2,650, which is a 45% increase over the last sixteen years. In contrast, Newport Harbor High School had enrollment of 2,218 in the year 2000, and last week had a confirmed enrollment of 2,403 students, an increase of only 8% over the same period of time. These numbers are important because they show that the development of residential neighborhoods on this side of the bay, such as Newport Coast, One Ford Road, and Benita Canyon, which is Benita Canyon, have negatively impacted the traffic and parking at CDM High and the surrounding neighborhoods. So we feel for the residents as well. Rising enrollment affects everyone, the residents surrounding the school, parent drivers, students trying to park, and volunteers at the school. Nobody's happy with the current situation, but we all have to work together to make it better for all of us. Eliminating parking on the public streets around the school is not really a viable option, but we did come to a pretty good conclusion, I think, and I ask that you all vote yes on the resolution as presented tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Mara Quist. I am a parent from Our Lady Queen of Angels School, and I drive the perimeter of Corona Del Mar High School twice a day to drop off and pick up children. My experience thus far this school year is that it is a safer drive now with the no parking zones in place on Vista Del Oro and Mar Vista, because there's no longer the constant risk of students stepping out from between parked cars into busy traffic on their way to and from school. I witnessed many close calls last school year between students crossing these roads and vehicles going both directions on them. Any students that cross these roads now on their way to the campus are easily seen by oncoming traffic since the near solid line of parked cars that reduced pedestrian visibility has been relocated. As with any of us here, I'm a parent, I certainly don't want to hit a child, and nor do I want to stop quickly to avoid a child and be rear-ended when I have little ones in my car myself. So I wanted to thank you for the no parking zones and for all of your ongoing commitment to safety around Corona Del Mar High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Sue Dvorak, and I live in the Bluffs neighborhood which surrounds Corona Del Mar High School. I come to you this evening to express my support of the city council's move to restrict parking around Corona Del Mar High School. Thank you. For decades, there has been a continual deterioration of safe and reasonable access to the East Bluff area neighborhood, to and from and within the community. Repeated expansions of the Corona Del Mar High School and Our Lady Queen of Angels Church, combined with the construction of Corona Del Mar Middle School and the approved Our Lady Queen of Angels 10,000-square-foot gymnasium slated for 2017, have increasingly paralyzed traffic in our neighborhood, robbed residents of parking, and severely compromised safety around Corona Del Mar High School. In fact, our neighborhood was never designed, and from its inception, it was never intended to accommodate all of the school expansions, the increasing number of students, and traffic that has evolved over the decades. Safety concerns should be the utmost concern for all of us, residents, parents, teachers, students, administrators, and school board and city council members. I urge you to move forward with parking restrictions on Vista Del Oro and Mar Vista. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, thank you so much, Mayor, City Council, and staff for letting us all speak this evening. My name is Catherine Kendall, I'm a resident of the plaza which borders Corona Del Mar High School, and I want to thank the city council for the parking restrictions. It makes it so much safer, the visibility has increased exponentially, it's much safer. I cannot tell you over the past thirteen years with the increased traffic how many near-misses I personally have had and I have witnessed, as well as accidents. I encourage you to maintain the current restrictions as they are on both Vista Del Oro and Mar Vista. I thank you very much for paying attention to safety.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Trenton Rhodes and I'm a senior at Corona Del Mar High School this year. One quick note that I wanted to add to this discussion is that I believe that the thinking when the parking restrictions were first put in place was that more newly-driving sophomores and even older freshmen would carpool with their parents to school, and I have seen this happen more than ever. However, the parents are dropping off their kids in the senior pool parking lot, and this is leading to a lot more congestion on East Bluff Drive than I've ever seen before, and I believe that that street is a lot more vital of a road than Mar Vista is, where those kids would normally be turning left onto. I know personally, in this first week, I've already been stopped in the intersection in Jamboree due to this congestion, that's way before you even get to Corona Del Mar High School, and then I had to wait in that line for fifteen minutes, and I think that that is actually a more dangerous factor than some of the other things that have been presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next, please.
Hi, I'm Annie Lindt, I'm an East Bluff resident and a strong supporter of Corona Del Mar High School. I know many of the faces sitting here in the room behind us, and I'm so proud of these kids, they've done amazing things. I want to thank their teacher, Brendan Fisher, for bringing them here and showing them how government works firsthand, because there's nothing like when it affects you, then you really invest. But one of the points that I think that they're unaware of is you don't control the parking at CDM on campus. That is controlled by the school district. The school is on state land. You can only regulate and keep safe the streets that surround the schools. The issue of the amount of parking that is at Corona Del Mar High School is squarely in the hands of the school board. So perhaps the next meeting of the school board, which happens to coincide, we just left the school board and spoke to them, and we're coming here to speak to you, perhaps our students can come and visit the school board and explain to them that this is a problem, and how can they participate, and how can the students participate, and how can we find solutions as a community? Because the school is our neighbor. We love living with the school. We're polite to our neighbor, they're polite back. The kids are great, I don't have a problem with the kids. I do have a problem with the safety. It's very, very frightening, and I don't want any of these kids to be hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Debbie O'Connor, and I have a junior, Megan O'Connor, at Corona Del Mar High School. I came up here because I wanted to address how impactful the restriction on parking has been for me as a parent. My daughter's sixteen, we bought her a car, a safe car, used Ford Explorer to drive to school. She has not been able to drive it to school. I'm driving her to school. I work, my husband works, so we're taking turns driving her to school. She's had to Uber home three times this week because I work and I cannot get back to the school to pick her up. Corona Del Mar needs more parking, not less parking. We're taxpayers, and I really don't understand why the neighborhoods that are public streets don't allow parking, at least during the time period that the kids are in school. The kids go to school, at least my daughter does, 7:50 she gets out around 1:20. If they could allow parking in that time, I would think that many of the surrounding neighborhoods around CDM, that if they're public streets, I understand that some of the streets are private streets and they're homeowner-protected private streets, but the ones that are public streets, if we could allow parking during that timeframe, and then after that, if the kids have after-school sports or something, maybe they move and get closer to the school when the senior parking lot is opened up or something. But restricting the parking is impactful to parents, and I don't know how it's going to exist. I can't keep having her Uber home, so we need to find a better resolution. I'm very sympathetic to the neighborhood. I live in Newport Coast, walking is not an option for my daughter, but when we had the elementary school go in and they put in a school loop, I knew that that was impactful to me. I didn't like necessarily having a school loop, Dave Kiff may remember that, came in our backyard and looked in the backyard. I understand that, I'm sympathetic. We want to work on a resolution, finding some sort of willingness where we work together to find something where they can park on a public street for a limited amount of time, and hopefully by the time those neighbors are coming home from work, they're gone. So I just wanted to show that it is impactful, and we need to find something that works for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Max Johnson, and I'm part of the ASB student body at Corona Del Mar High School, and I know from a fact, I play water polo and I get there at 6:00 AM for morning practice three days a week, and there are cars parked around the school when I'm there. So I understand these are obviously residents of the area, and that they probably leave around or before we get to school, but this is still an issue. And while there are residents parking at our school, like, not our school, yes, our school, but parking around the school, these are spots that students could have, as well as residents could have. So this communal parking around the school could be beneficial to both, and as residents have stated, that they would rather have it marked as a red zone versus being able to park there, I think being able to have communal parking for the whole group, for both groups, the residents and the students, would be beneficial for everyone, because then everyone would be able to share this area. Also, safety, while it is a concern, and I have almost been in an accident with someone like jaywalking across the street, I understand it's a concern and that students are going to cross the street regardless of having, of there being a crossing walker, not a crossing walker, or parking on the other side or not, because people are, students are going to jaywalk either way. It's not going to stop the jaywalking problem, while it might alter part of the jaywalking problem, we're going to, it's still going to occur. And I think that helping both the residents and the students in parking will greatly impact the area and relieve the parking issue that there is. I also'd like to address the amendment to the street sweeping. That is a big issue that we have had, and I think moving street sweeping to Monday mornings will greatly alleviate the problem, because half the week, or the whole, like, one day of the week, half the parking is gone, straight off the block. So that, alleviating that issue by moving it to a Monday morning when fewer students will be there, will greatly change the parking problem on Thursdays and Fridays, and be able to help the students and the residents of East Bluff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, my name is Jane Jones, and I have been involved with the Newport Mesa School District probably in some capacity for the past fifteen years. So first and foremost, I wanted to say, wow, this is our future, and I want to thank this great representation of students that appeared for us tonight. This is government at its finest. So the other thing I'd like to thank is we had a very proactive meeting on Friday that several people helped facilitate, and with the help of Dave Kiff, John Lewis, Tony Bryan, Mark, Kevin Muldoon, we really came to some great ideas, suggestions, strategies, and with what we thought was a great plan. What I would ask, and I'd also like to thank, personally thank Kevin for you for reaching out to our assistant principal over the weekend to really firm up the plan, to see kind of what was the proper, you know, times and things like that for us. But I'd really like to just say that the process, that process really worked. I think communication is key. I think we need to have all the stakeholders involved, and I really think moving forward, this isn't just a city council issue, this isn't a school board issue, this is all of our issue, and if we're all working together, we will come up with the best resolutions. So I am asking you to amend the resolution as proposed tonight, and I did want to bring up to Dave just one little, couple little items, that we would like to address, street sweeping only on Mondays, and take it off the table on Thursday and Friday. And we also did talk about, and I don't think it was mentioned, where those two streets coming out on Mar Vista, we would red curb just around those areas for safety, because they are blind corners. So we were addressing safety issues in that meeting. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Maddie Tamburello, and I'm currently a junior at CDM. There's a few points that I'd just like to address that would add to the conversation. First off, I, for one, know that majority of our students are extremely involved in our school, and a majority of us play sports at our school, and in terms of alternative transportation to school, like buses have been brought up, a thing to note is that buses aren't going to stay for sports practice after school. If we have practice till three buses aren't going to be there to pick us up, so we might have a way to school, but we won't have a way back, which doesn't necessarily solve the problem. And within our junior and our senior and our sophomore classes, we have over a thousand students, and we need as many spots as possible in regards to safety. Blind corners are definitely dangerous, but we need those spots to get there and back from school, because that's both an issue. And finally, moving street sweeping would be a great help on most weeks, but since we implemented the block schedule, we will have a few non-late starts, we will need as many spots as possible, as many times as we can get them. Street sweeping will help us tremendously, but there will still be some weeks that we might have issues, so we need to have alternate solutions for that, and by opening up the neighborhoods and around streets, that'd help us tremendously, and I really thank you for hearing us speak on this issue.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Ron Rubino, I'm a twenty-nine-year resident of East Bluff. I want to commend the city council, I appreciate the efforts on the curbing, on the red curbing. I think that I go by the school almost every morning, and it is a big improvement in the safety, particularly on those corners, and I think the compromise you put forward tonight is a good compromise, and I really appreciate the council talking to the PTA, talking and listening, and reaching that compromise. So I think, I want to say that I support that. Further, I think the presentation by the students is excellent, I think they've made some very good points about long-term planning, and the school board, I have to say, lack of long-term planning. The real issue here is solving the problem on the campus and accommodating in a safe way parking on the streets as you have. I think this discussion tonight, the tape ought to be given to the trustees at the school board, they ought to hear this discussion and hear what their students said. I think that students ought to participate at a future school board meeting, and this is also, I work in the area of consulting in traffic control and parking enforcement. I don't think creative solutions have been looked at on campus to maximize the amount of area they have for parking, I think more could be done, and I also believe that budget priorities, the students ought to get involved in that. They ought to look at the budget and how money's being spent, and look at where money could be spent on campus and prioritize solving their parking. They deserve more parking. So with the growth of school should have been the growth of parking. That's a lack of planning. With the change of law, that kids can't carpool, there should have been planning. So to me, this is not the city of Newport Beach not planning, this is the Newport Mesa Unified School District not planning. And I want to encourage the kids from the debate and the other areas of school to continue this discussion with the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Devin Cohen, and I'm a part of the Youth in Government program here in Corona Del Mar High School. I'm currently a senior here and an active member in the student body, and I would, first of all, like to thank you for the opportunity to talk in front of you. It is a great honor to have our government program here, being a model government, being able to be expressed here within actual government, which is a feat of its own, first of all. True. I'd like to address some of the points. Although our parking situation, some of the residents do believe, is somewhat vacant at certain points, we can only fit 500 within both the enclave and the senior lot, and that is designated for only areas, and even though there might be parking restrictions around it, there's still going to be traffic either way, so why not alleviate it in the first place and then get the resolution of parking and traffic out of the way? While safety is always a concern, safety is going to be an issue in both regards, so I don't necessarily see how that would kind of, I guess it would clear up the streets in a certain way, however, parking of the students is definitely a priority right now because we are an ever-growing campus, as shown. shown. And the moral of this speech I'm trying to give here right now is that compromise is what the student body right here is looking for. Compromise is the essence of government, which sadly, a lot of people have forgotten. And I'd really hope to compromise with the school board, to compromise with the East Bluff residents and compromise in general. So thank you for the opportunity to talk in front of you all.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Bella Knipstra. I'm a senior at Corona Del Mar. I wanted to point out that most of the residents, when they're speaking about safety, they're only seeing from their perspective when they're driving after most of the kids have gone to school. And having less parking is only going to encourage less safe behavior because more kids are going to be waking up earlier and earlier and earlier. People have said that they've been waking up two hours before they have to go to school. So that's like 5:00 in the morning. And that's going to encourage more tired driving, which is going to encourage more accidents. And then if there's less parking, more students are going to be racing around the school to try and find a parking spot because there's nowhere for anyone to park. And I don't think that the, a lot of the East Bluff residents are seeing that because they're not in the experience firsthand. And there's going to be the unsafe problem of jaywalking even if there's less parking, but there's also going to be the increase of tired drivers and people trying to go around the school multiple times just to find a parking spot. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name's Sabrina Burkholder and I'm a senior at Corona Del Mar High School. So just to address the jaywalking issue, there are two separate crosswalks on like the curve, I forget what that street's called. But I'm sure if we communicated to the rest of our student body, the fact that we need to use those, people would make an effort to try and use those to stop jaywalking. And also, like one of the past speakers said, they talked about the streets, like having a certain time for like the spots to be open during the school hours. But like, I know when I was parking on the very back street, I would walk a mile during lunch to go get my car so I could move it to the pool parking lot. So a lot of students do do that, which opens up a lot of those spots during lunchtime.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Do I want to turn it to staff or did you want to make a comment, Mr. Muldoon?
I did. Thanks, thank you to the student body and debate and speech team members for being civil and articulate. When we first communicated with the high school administration, we were sort of led to believe that there'd be some communication with the student body and the parents. But it's pretty understandable that that wasn't adequate and my apologies for that. I believe the safest place to park on campus is actually on campus. The safest place to park is on campus. And that is what the administration sort of led us to believe as well. So my message, my request to you is to ask your representatives at the school board level for more parking. And I will do what I can to help contribute to the cost from the city. Because I think it's a, it's a city issue. If there was more parking, you'd be safer. The residents around the area would feel safer and it could help alleviate congestion. So please take the message that you deliver today to you representatives of the school board.
You.
I had a quick comment, Mr. Mayor, Mr. and Kevin. I wanted to also thank, from staff's perspective, your participation today. And I want to take you up on a couple of things. I know we all will. Please do help us respect that neighborhood. I think it is about respect. It's about respect for each of you. And I would imagine everybody that's in this room right now is not the problem. But help us work with your fellow students. They listen more to you than us old people. If you, the last young woman that talked about jaywalking, that would be terrific if we could stop or minimize jaywalking. And stopping, I mean, it's not everybody, but people who kind of just scoot their trash out of their car and leave it there. Those are the things that not doing that show respect for the community. So let's build on that. I know Mr. Muldoon and the staff will be happy to work with anybody at the school, the moms that came in Friday night, Friday afternoon, and the students here today. Let's build on this and take it forward. And again, show that respect to each other. We're willing, willing participants here. Back to you. Thank you.
Sure. Any other comments, Mr. Webb or Mr. Bryan? Okay, Mr. Petros?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wow. Students, families of CDM High School, I am duly impressed. Mr. Fisher, once again, you put together a great, a great group. I've had the pleasure and honor of participating in youth and government. My daughter was a historian, I believe it was. And I've met you up in Sacramento when you went up to your statewide trip. But tonight, I was really impressed. You represented yourself very well. And young man, if you ever want this seat, I'm willing to give it to you. You did a great job. There were some comments that I just want to make sure, though, that we are clear on, we are crystal clear on. One, there was an overarching banner of communication. We need to communicate and we need to get together on that. Please know, please know, that at least quarterly, Mr. Kiff, Mr. Webb, Mr. Bryan and I meet with representatives of the district, from Mr. Navarro or Dr. Navarro on down to your principal. We do this regularly. And we bring these issues up to them regularly, regularly. And we get a lot of that. Okay? So that's, we are making those efforts. Please understand, the folks that represent you, your body of government, is making an effort to communicate. We are making that effort to cooperate. It needs to be reciprocated. I'd be real careful with that, that we were here first item because that school is not the one that was built in 66. That school had busing. And if you want to use that argument, then nobody in Newport Beach has standing to complain against the airport. Residents down on the peninsula have no standing to really argue about the bars because they were there a long, long time ago. So let's be real mindful of that we were here first. No, as was said more eloquently by a lot of these young people, we're a community. We got to be together on this. We have a municipal code here and in it, there's a parking code. And that parking code is like every other one virtually in the state of California. And in that parking code, it says that all users have to park, must park their demand on site. If this were a question of restaurants, we'd be having a completely different conversation because you would all be tired of having the restaurants park on your streets. We hear that in Corona Del Mar all the time. If this were a matter of office parking, we would be having a different conversation. But no, this is the school. Well, really, it's not unlike any one of those other issues. And I think, again, the young people so eloquently put it together. The issue is parking supply. The school, as it changes over time and has become the excellent educational institution that it is, has drawn more students. We have more families. There is more demand for parking and less other opportunities to get there. As the school district goes to budget and build new theaters, new sports facilities, new classrooms, I've never once heard them say, oh yeah, and we need to provide the parking for it. Instead, what they do is they say, let it go on the street. That's unacceptable and it's irresponsible. So I commend Mayor Protem Muldoon for finding a compromise to arrest this issue now. But please don't be deluded that this is the solution. This is going to be back in another couple of years when there is more parking demand and the district has not done the long-term planning that it really ought to have when we have seen the 45% increase in enrollment. Please, I strongly encourage you, if you are really passionate about this matter, as you've demonstrated tonight, take that passion to the school district and ask them to rearrange their budgeting priorities and provide for you what you need. And that's parking. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments up here?
I will concur with that. I want to just say too, I'm just so honored and proud to see the smart young people who are our future leaders and will be future leaders in our community and our state and our national government. Keep doing the great work you're doing. Make sure your voices get heard in an articulate, logical way and you will go far. Thank you for giving up your evening tonight and helping to inform our decision-making and to come forward with a compromise solution that may, may work hopefully for a period of time. And, and thank you, Mayor Protem Muldoon, for helping to facilitate this and bring compromise together. So I'll turn it over to you.
Make a motion to adopt a minute's staff report.
Second it.
Let's call for the vote.
Ballon. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. I'm not saying it. Yeah, it's 6-0. Mayor Dixon, you voted yes, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be 6-0.
Maybe my finger's sticking. Okay, thank you and thank you again for all of your rapt attention. Thank you. Well done. All right, next.
To tell Jen.
Shh, we're still in session. So you could cheer outside. Thank you. Item number 10, the Baboa Peninsula Crosswalk Crossing Study. I pulled this because I wanted to ask Director of Public Works, Dave Webb, to talk about this. This is really important and I'm very pleased to see this project going forward. Maybe we might add some clarification to what is being done in this part and then maybe a future part.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I'd be happy to. And with me tonight is Tony Bryny. He's our traffic engineer and actually going to be overseeing this study. As you know, over the years, we've had a lot of requests from folks on the peninsula to look at the crosswalks on the peninsula. There's a lot of traffic, a lot of pedestrians. Just by the nature of the way the peninsula's laid out, where you have a bay and an ocean on one side and people tend to park on both sides and traverse Baboa Boulevard, we have a lot of crosswalks on there. I want to say that all the crosswalks currently are, meet the legal standard, meet the state standards. But there may be a way to heighten and enhance some of them. So what we're doing here is we have 37 crosswalk locations we're going to look at. 36 of those are what they call uncontrolled crosswalks. There's no stop signs. They're just a crosswalk at a corner. One of those at 38th Street is actually a controlled crosswalk. It has a flashing red light. The rest of those crosswalks that have mentioned the 45, the rest are at signal locations and we don't need to look at those. Those crosswalks are at their maximum extent at a signalized location. So we're going to go ahead and we've started the effort already. We've started looking at summer pedestrian counts across these crosswalks. We're going to hire this consultant to go ahead and do winter counts and then evaluate every crosswalk for possible safety concerns, lighting, signage and other things, and make recommendations to us and where we may need to enhance it. In some cases, we want, and I want to make sure we manage expectations because a lot of, a lot of the emails you see and I see that people say, this crosswalk's dangerous. I was trying to walk across and a person sped right in front of me. Some of those things we can't control. They're enforcement issues. A stripe on the road is not going to stop it. But other things we can do, maybe it's a lighting issue. Maybe there's a signage issue we can add to and enhance the safety of that crosswalk. So we hope to have this study go through. It should be done near the end of the year. And then we'll look to maybe do some implementation. Mr. Bryan, did I cover that or anything, Deb?
No, I think that's correct. And we will be having some outreach meetings with the community as well during the preparation of the study. So that will be part of the process. And then the only other thing I would say is we're going to be looking at accident reports and history of that. So we want to make sure that we take that into consideration as well.
Well, I appreciate that. We talked about Via Lido, specifically in the Lido Village area because we are having enhanced and increasing retail activity and just vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic. So when would that be included in your plan of work?
It's going to be, we're looking at that separate from this report. We've already started collecting pedestrian counts and traffic volumes at Via Lido and Via Porto. That's the primary intersection that we're going to look at.
Good.
But that's going to be done by staff outside of this report.
Okay, but you're, it's kind of going in parallel or?
We're actually, we've started on the Via Lido study already.
Great.
So we're ahead of this study.
Okay, very good. Any questions up here? No? Any comments from the public on the crosswalk study on the peninsula?
Hi, everybody. I'm Chris Benzema. I know quite a few of you by now with the whole parking situation. My question on the, on the pedestrian studies are, how are you guys conducting those studies? And if you can't answer that question right now, where could we find?
I'm sorry, what was?
More information about how the studies are being conducted?
Was that your only question?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Webb or Mr. Bryan?
Basically, we start with collecting a lot of data. And we've already put up cameras at the intersections so that we can collect pedestrian counts, accurate pedestrian counts. And then we look at accident history. We look at traffic volumes. We look at the existing signage and striping, lighting. We take all those into consideration, determine if there are improvements we can make at those individual crosswalks.
Sounds good. And then one last thing, on the crosswalk crossing study, have you guys done the, find out how much money it costs to put the lights in to upgrade that technology at the crosswalks? I know it's a lot of money. I was just wondering if you guys have gone through that?
We have knowledge of that. And you're talking probably the lights in the ground, the flashing lights.
Yeah.
We have a cost for that, but that may not be the right appropriate application for this. So that's what part of the consultant will say. We have had some experience in that in other areas. It hasn't worked out as well as we hope. So, I mean, that may not be the right solution, but we will be evaluating it.
And your primary concern is at Findlay Avenue?
No, I used to live further down by the, where that New Marina Park is. And, you know, you'd see accidents all the time or people coming out. And it's, it's the second car that doesn't see why the first car's stopping and someone would get hit. And you'd see it every, every weekend, especially in the summer. So you always were wondering, you know, why aren't there lights installed like in some of the other cities or other crosswalks in our city? Because those definitely do help.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for speaking.
Sure, thank you.
Any other public comments? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back here. So we have a motion to support the proposed action for the crosswalk study.
I'll move the item.
And I'll second it. I'll call for the vote. I'm pushing the button.
Okay, go ahead. Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Okay, now we are going to our public hearing. No, excuse me.
Comments?
Public comments.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward on non-agenda items. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Tom Cupfrien and I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Anna Van Loon Cupfrien, regarding the replacement of a memorial bench. I know mayor and city manager are well aware of this issue, but I just want to bring you all up to speed with some background information and recent developments. My wife's sister Cora Van Loon, who was a resident of Island Avenue, lost her battle with cancer in 2001. In 2003, her family paid for a memorial bench placed on a waterfront public space around the corner from her house. This space at Buena Vista and Edgewater was very special to Cora, where she enjoyed the view, meditated and did her yoga. Last November, the nearest resident to the bench brought a request to the Parks, Beach and Recreation Commission to move the bench to a different location. The request was unanimously denied for a number of reasons. Six months later, the bench was stolen. Now, since then, park maintenance supervisor Paul Ramirez has been working diligently with my wife to replace the bench, although we were told we had to pay for a new memorial plaque, which we did. The replacement bench was ready to be reinstalled over a month ago, when my wife received a call from the city manager, Dave Kiff. He wanted to discuss the possibility of installing the bench at another location such as Marina Park. The resident whose request to remove the bench or to move the bench had already been denied and a clearly defined appeal process was not followed. Now seems to be influencing Mr. Kiff to try again through informal means. Now, although this should not have been necessary, over Labor Day weekend, my wife and I decided to walk the surrounding neighborhood with a petition to see how the neighbors felt. Although knocking on doors was something I was dreading, it actually turned out to be an extremely heartwarming experience. The, I'm sorry, the response was positively overwhelming. This is a close-knit neighborhood who are passionate about keeping the bench right where it is. We met people who knew Cora and welcomed us with open arms. Many people were wondering what had happened to the bench and were shocked when told it was stolen. One young woman who at first didn't answer her door, then ran out to catch us to sign the petition because her boyfriend had proposed to her on that bench. There were many other wonderful stories. And when we were done, we had received 62 signatures in favor of keeping the bench right where it has been for the past 13 years. signatures in favor of keeping the bench right where it has been for the past 13 years. This does not include our own family and friends, who enjoy the bench and a visit with Cora, but just the immediate neighbors, which I believe is most significant. There was only one gentleman on Buena Vista who did not, did not want to sign, because he didn't think that area should be a public space in the first place. Even the neighbors to either side of the complaining residents, resident, were happy to sign. So we are all asking you to do the right, right thing and return the bench to its rightful place without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a, a copy of the petition, can we?
All right, if you please give it to the city clerk. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you very much.
Just as a point of clarification, Madam Mayor, that is a public space. Yeah, so I just, if, if you're out there listening, do not be deluded. That is public space, and that bench was on a public space. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I wasn't going to speak about this till I heard it was up for comment. I have a second home on Buena Vista, and that is a lovely park. There is another petition going around for the bench not to be replaced. I'm not sure if that's made it to you? No? Okay. Because there was a petition going around the same Labor Day weekend, opposite of this. And the problem with the bench is that, and the evenings, there's a lot of activity there with mainly drunken people.
Give your name.
Lori Prejean. Sorry. There's a lot of drunk people who hang around that park after hours. The park closes at 10 o'clock, and because the bench is there, it seems to invite a lot of people. And so while I'm compassionate to the family members, I think maybe a plaque near the tree might be a little bit more conducive for the neighborhood, rather than the bench that was there. And that's it, just that idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Barrymore.
And I'm Teri Basman.
Thank you for listening to us tonight. This is certainly my first experience here. And thank you for all that you do. I know you have a lot of priorities, obviously. Teri and I and Lori also are here because we have a goal of creating a walking culture at CDM in the area, to make it safer to do so. We, Teri and I have seventh grade kids that just started, and we live in One Ford Road, and we've walked every day to school with them and walked home with them every day for the past two weeks. And we believe that this, the, the issue and why parents are resistant to walking, which obviously this would clear up a lot of the traffic issues, maybe some of the parking things going on as well, but the main safety issue is the yield area at Jamboree and Ford. And then certainly, because there's no crossing guard there, do you know which area I'm speaking about? And so we believe if there was a crossing guard there, or some lights flashing at a minimum, some signage, that that would help tremendously, because we see our kids, they're a very responsible walk, but right when they get to the part with the yield, we've watched very diligently. People are on texting, they're not watching. And with the speed limit being 55 miles per hour down Jamboree, I think that is also feeding to the, the safety issue there with no crossing guard. And obviously, our desired results would be that it reduces the number of cars and congestion, if people feel safer walking there. Kids become more aware of pedestrian safety, so that when they drive, they understand from a walking perspective. And then certainly, we don't need to talk about the health benefits to walking to school. So we were just asking for your consideration for crossing guards at that specific place of Jamboree, that, right there at Ford and Jamboree. And then if you did have one at MacArthur and Ford, you could pull from multiple neighborhoods down that direction as well. We just don't want to wait till someone, you know, gets hurt in that area. Am I missing anything?
One of the things, too, besides the crossing guard, is just to have lights across, just to alert the drivers that this is a school zone as well, and...
Identify yourself.
Oh, Teri Basman. And also, some signage before the yield area. So it, it seems like when we wait in the little pocket before the yield, we can count at least three cars that zoom through before the fourth car might stop. So I think that if the perception is that it is safer, which it will be with a few little tweaks there, I think we could get more kids walking to and from school. And we're trying to create that culture.
It takes us 12 minutes from the front of One Ford Road to get to school, to walk to school, it's 12 minutes. But I know this isn't collaborative, but have people talked about? I feel like, are we?
One of the challenging things about public comment time is the council members...
Yeah.
The council members can't react. I'll tell you, I'll follow up with you.
All right. Yeah, well, this has been very helpful on...
Can I just make one more point? I'm sorry.
Go quickly.
Quickly. Most of the people that we know in One Ford Road, which are many families that send their kids to CDM, they drive them. So we're trying to change that culture.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
So if you could shoot me an email, I'm on the city's website, we'll, we'll talk about it some more.
Now, you're speaking again.
Yes, I'm sorry.
On the same subject?
Yes, on the same subject. I just wanted to clarify one point, where we're asking for the flashing signs that say "School Zone Ahead," we're looking for them on all four directions, to alert people coming over the blind hill, coming down Jamboree, up, and then on the two sides, from East Bluff and One Ford Road.
Could you just repeat your name one more time?
Lori Prejean.
Just so it's on the record. All right. Thank you so much. Next.
Hello, everybody. Chris Benzine again. I just came here tonight. I wanted to thank Dave Kiff, Dave Webb, and Ms. Diane Dixon for the signage in front of the Finley Track. So I'm speaking on behalf of the Finley Track tonight. Thank you for your efforts on putting in the new signage to the front of our neighborhood. It's definitely helped a little bit. The neighbors have seen that effort, and they're very thankful that you guys are, are making progress on our issue.
Well, and thank you for bringing all these issues to our attention, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none. Now we will go to oral reports from the city council on committee activities. Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very quickly, this Thursday, we have a finance committee meeting. We haven't met over the summer. This will be the first meeting back, and this one is full of issues that will be of interest to the public. Most notably, the meeting is pretty much reserved to questions of our investment, our investment pool, our investment advisors, and how the investments are being stewarded. So that meeting will be in the Newport Coast Conference Room, starting at four, four o'clock. So please join us Thursday, four o'clock, the Newport Coast Room.
Mr. Tosh.
Yeah, just one thing I forgot to, when I was talking about the local coastal plan, I forgot to acknowledge Kim and Brenda. You know, they worked on it also, worked really hard to get that thing approved.
Oh.
Are we all waving that? That's cute. You know, I never really liked that at the Coastal Commission, but actually, looking out this way, it does look kinda cute. Anyway, I just want to thank our staff, they just did a terrific job on it.
Yeah, I second that notion. Mr. Piater? Mr. Duffield? Mayor Protem? We do have a be-vac, Baboa Village Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow at Marina Park at 4:00 PM. We have, also have not met in several months, so there are a lot of good updates on exciting things going on in Baboa Village. So thank you for, those who are listening to this, I hope you can attend. Okay, we'll move quickly into our public hearing. Item number 24, the Community Development Block Grant Update. Do we need a staff report on this, or, Mr. Campbell?
We're, we're happy to provide a full report if the council chooses.
What is everyone's?
I'll move the item.
All right, all right, let's vote. Oh, excuse me. Too much in a hurry.
It's a public hearing.
Public comment on item number 24. Seeing none, we'll come back to council. Let's go for the vote.
Mayor Protem, there we go. The motion carries unanimously, six-zero.
All right, thank you, staff, for your excellent presentation.
You're welcome.
All right, current business. Item number 25, MacArthur Boulevard pavement rehabilitation.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, the next three items are all fairly same-dollar items. You have the same offer. We, we would have staff available for questions or maps. Otherwise, we, we defer to you on that.
All right, council members, any comment on item number 25?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the item.
Second? All right, let's go to the public. Any comments on item number 25? Seeing none, let's come back for a vote.
Mayor Dixon?
I did it.
Thumbs up?
I'll do it again. All right.
Okay, there you go. Motion carries unanimously, six-zero.
All right, number 26, Big Canyon Restoration and Water Quality Improvement Project.
I'll move the item. Second.
Public comments on Big Canyon Restoration and Water Quality Improvement? Seeing no...
Another question, staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was doing way too fast.
That's good, they're going fast. Mr. Kiff, is, this is in the area that the, that the Department of Fish and Wildlife is gonna want to charge people passes to walk in?
This is not.
This is not?
That's correct. This is our park, city park.
Okay, it's not part of there? It's not part of there, where that little trail is?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then as long as we stop for questions, I have one question. Mr. Kiff, could you just very quickly talk about the Big Canyon Restoration? Yes, I understand this particular project and item number 26 is a portion, or maybe Mr. Webb, or Mark V. could speak. This is a portion of the total restoration that staff is looking for other sources of funding to complete this entire project over a period of time?
That's correct, Mayor. Maybe I'll just show you, Leilani, if you could just pull up the slides, just a few maps that just really explain the, the overall area. So Big Canyon is, you know, 1,200 acres in size, in terms of the watershed, and drains all the way up from our reservoir down through the Big Canyon Country Club and into the, the bay. Then Big Canyon itself is, is that area between, it's somewhere around 50-plus acres, 39 of which is owned by the city, from Jamboree Road to Back Bay Drive and into the bay. And then the, and, and there's several different areas within it that, that would need to be further restored and improvements made there. But what we're talking about is basically the, the east half, which is about the first five acres of the water coming off of Jamboree Road and from the golf course.
And then the subsequent areas we'll be talking about over time?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, let's call for the vote.
Motion carries unanimously, six-zero.
All right, and then item number 27 has...
So there's a new staff report, which is a recommendation to reject all bids, if I'm correct?
Madam Mayor, I'll move that we reject all bids and direct staff to re-advertise the project.
All right, go to the public.
Did that motion include getting a smaller fire truck, so that we don't have to build a big garage? Never mind, never mind. All the questions.
Sounds good. Public comment, please, on going back out to bid. Seeing none, come back to vote.
Motion carries unanimously, please, six-zero.
All right, before I turn this over to Madam Clerk, I just want to introduce a new colleague of our city clerk department. That's Jennifer Nelson, who is assistant deputy, assistant city clerk. So welcome, Jennifer. And, and we all survived today, and so appreciate your help, and welcome to Newport Beach. All right, Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing side.
Seeing none. We are adjourned. Thank you.